Good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council to order Monday, February 24th, 2025 at 7:03. For the record, there was no closed session tonight. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Morris?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here. Okay, we have everybody rise for the invocation led by Councilmember Dan Coops and the pleas of allegiance by Elizabeth Oba, our Director of Planning and Building Services.
Please bow with me. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this evening in hour to give you thanks. We're thankful for our city, we're thankful for our staff, and of course, our constituents. Be with us as we deliberate those items in front of us. Give us the wisdom to do what's right for our city. We keep in mind always our first responders and the safety that they provide us, and we ask that you provide safety to them. Be with us throughout this meeting. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, we're gonna do council announcements. I'll go first. Celebrate springtime by helping a child in need. The Bellflower Volunteer Center works closely with community groups, churches, service clubs, school organizations, and residents to provide spring baskets for our students here in the community. There are several ways to get involved. The opportunities include Adopt a Child. The Bellflower Volunteer Center will provide you with the details of a child you can adopt, such as a name, age, etc. You create a basket based on that information, and they provide, and you can drop that basket off here at the Volunteer Center. Or a basket can be donated. Items for the basket you can use. All donations must be received by March 7th, 2025. If you would like to have more information or want to be a part of this program, please visit the Volunteer Center at Sims Park located at 16614 Clark Avenue, or call 562-804-1424, extension 2331. Thank you. Mayor Protem Sunny Santinas?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The Bellflower Parks and Recreation Department provides engaging programming for individuals with adaptive needs to its adaptive recreation program. Meeting twice a week, the program offers a variety of activities, including indoor and outdoor games, crafts, and sports. Open to participants ages 10 and older, this free program welcomes individuals of all ability levels. Those who require assistance must be accompanied by an adult caregiver that is 18 or older. Join the fun at Cravatus Park located at 10500 Flora Vista Street on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. While pre-registration is required, participants can join anytime during the session. For more information, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2261. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Sunny Santinas. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. CRNR offers free bulky item collections for residential customers. Request a pickup for items that do not fit properly in your carts to help keep Bellflower clean and tidy. Proper disposals of large items reduce landfill waste, prevents pollution, and provides opportunities for reuse. Bulky items include furniture, appliances, electronic equipment, residential waste, clothing, and tires. Items must not be more than eight feet in length, four feet in width, or more than 150 pounds. To schedule a bulky item or e-waste collection, please call 562-944-4716. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Councilmember Dan Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Bellflower Certified Farmer's Market at Town Center Plaza, which is located at 16521 Aiden Moore Avenue, operates from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. every Monday, excluding certain holidays. Shoppers can enjoy a wide selection of fresh produce, bread, food vendors, and handcrafted specialty items. Come support local farmers and artisans. For more details, call 562-804-1424, extension 2013, or you can visit the website, which is www.farmandcraftmarket.com/bellflower. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Wendy Morris?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. Bellflower residents can safely dispose of their old electronics at the upcoming e-waste recycling event on March 15th and 16th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Woodruff Elementary, located at 15332 Eucalyptus Avenue. This is an opportunity to recycle items that have reached their end of life, whether they are working or not. Accepted items include computer monitors, televisions, printers, laptops, home entertainment systems, phones, and more. Major appliances such as refrigerators and microwaves will incur a service charge. Fluorescent light bulbs and household batteries are not accepted. This event is a great way to contribute to a cleaner, greener Bellflower. For more information, please call 562-804-6545. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris. All right, number 10, public comments. Mr. Smoot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda, and anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium, as we review that particular item, and you'll be given three minutes to address the City Council.
Sign in, please, and then state your name when you're ready to go for the microphone. And is the green light on at the bottom of that mic?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Hello, everyone. My name's Mona Patrick, and I have an empty lot at 8710 Artesia. I think the City Council is very aware of many vacant lots throughout the city that need to be considered going back into some rezoning. My lot in particular sits between a laundromat and an apartment building, and we have had a heck of a time trying to find a tenant. We've had two tenants. One had to leave because they weren't zoned correctly. The second one, after they thought they came to the city and did everything correctly, they weren't. They were an outstanding electrical company. They put over $25,000 into fixing the lighting and making it all very usable and friendly for Bellflower. Unfortunately, it just cost them $25,000 to take everything out to leave the city, and they've totally just left Bellflower. So what I'm coming to you for is it's not just my own lot, but there's other lots that really need some serious staff reviewing and looking at how we can rezone these to make them viable for the city to make money and viable for us. Now, I don't know about you folks, but $50,000 a year losing on my empty lot is a lot of money to me. It might not be to you. It is to me and my family. So as long as that lot is sitting there empty, I'm making no money, and the city's not doing anything. But I can tell you what it is doing. It's causing vandalism, graffiti, homelessness, and who do I call? 800 Graffiti Line. You guys were just out at my building last week. I call the police department when we have vandalism. So I'm taking other city resources because this lot's vacant. So I'm just asking for somebody to take some notice in some of these vacant lots and the rezoning of them, because I've had great people that want to be there, but it's so difficult to find the right tenant for that property. You know, I know there's a way. We can make some exceptions and get the city to work with us, because if you guys want to buy the property and take it back as eminent domain, I'm happy for that also, because it's of no value. It's really only causing problems for us, for people at the apartment building and so forth. So I ask you to consider that.
Question, Mona?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Where is this? Is it the laundromat on Artesia and Coke?
Yes, it is. And so 8710 is right next door. So the electrical company had put up a, what do you call it?
I don't know nothing about the electric company.
Well, it was next door.
It's got the clothespins on the roof.
Yes, yes, we do.
That's like a landmark.
Yes, we do. We have a fence there in front, and I was also told, I've met with Els Merelda, because now we can't have the fence. So now I'm gonna tear down the fence in front, and now all my beautiful white fences that are beyond there, and how pretty it looks inside, are just gonna be damaged.
So that's not the parking lot for the laundromat?
No, it's not. The parking lot is its own parcel.
There's a lot between the apartments and the laundromat?
Yes, yes.
That's not the laundromat?
No. The laundromat has its own in the back.
Oh.
They have about 15 spots back there.
So you leased it out to a contractor and?
We leased it out to an electrical contractor, and we got notices of violation and fees, and so they said, we had to let them out of their lease. I mean, I probably didn't have to, but I can't fight against this bureaucracy and feel good about it.
I understand what you're saying. I read aloud and clear. I just wanted to wrap my head around with what I thought was.
That's perfect.
I thought that was a parking lot.
No.
No, okay.
No.
Obviously, yes.
Has there ever been a viable business on this property?
No. The original owner that had it did have a storage, a storage, what do you call it? A storage container, and that's been there probably four years, and we've left it there. But we would be happy to make it, you know, if we could bring in a, like an AUD or something to make it a business, but then we're gonna go through the water and electrical and all those expenses just to make the lot usable, where somebody was just using it for storage for their electrical vans, and they said, no, you can't park your vans here overnight. It wasn't hurting anybody. They weren't making noise. They weren't out there, you know, at 2:00 in the morning, so.
Use the term "we." So do you own the laundromat?
Yes, I do. I own the laundromat, and I own that. I own both lots, yes.
So you've always had an unoccupied, you know, you've never had any income off of this thing significantly, have you?
We've never, never had any. We had it leased for a little bit, and then they had to move. That was a tire company, and they were told they couldn't keep their tires back there. So they left, and then we got the electrical company. They wanted to park their vans at night, and they were told they couldn't do that either.
What is the current zone?
Commercial.
CG.
CG.
Okay. Have you ever considered putting a building on there that would accompany a CG?
We talked about that, and I've come to the city and talked with them about it. It's just finding the right dimensions for the right parking and what kind of businesses, how big, you know, if they take 900 square feet, well, then maybe we're not gonna have enough space for whatever they consider for parking and so forth. So it's kind of like, yes, we would love to have an office for somebody to come and go, but the requirements, you know, include a bathroom, include, we can't, we have to have a closed garage. So if we bring vans in there, they have to park in the garage. You can't have any storage out there currently. So that's where we run into a problem when businesses come. We don't have a garage for them to put their stuff in.
Well, what you're saying certainly makes sense. We need to try to figure out something that'll benefit all of us.
I agree. And I know it's not just my lot. I do know that there's many others in the city that you drive by that are just vacant and not being used, because it's difficult to come to something like this and try to fight the bureaucracy, but I'm willing to do it because I think it's a win-win for everybody.
No, I agree. Where do we go from there?
That's a staff issue.
We're happy to set up a meeting.
Set up a meeting and talk about it.
That's something the council would like.
That lot's paved, isn't it?
I'm sorry, pardon me.
That lot is paved, right? It's not dirt?
Yes, it's paved. Yes, yes. And I have a handicap spot on it.
I'll comment on this. I thought it was a parking lot for the laundromat.
So did I.
So I'm definitely interested.
It's just two separate lots, is what it is.
Right.
With one owner, two separate lots.
Right. I'm definitely, I think, I see it from everyone up here, interested in working with staff on something here.
I think the two lots separate is not big enough with today's developments. They need to be one lot, one development.
Yeah. I thank you all for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to come forward and talk about something that's not on the agenda? All right, we're gonna move on. Yes. Oh, okay.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Joseph Luna, and I'm part of a church here in the city of Bellflower, and we have been here for a few years now. We originally in the city of Huntington Park. And just introducing ourselves, this is our first meeting here in the city. Since we've been here, we've done multiple events, summer events for back-to-school, backpacks, haircuts, clothing for the kids back to school. We've done events in the Christmas time, giving out toys. So we've been out here for a number of years, two years now. We try to do as much as we can with the city for the people, so we just wanted, I just wanted to come and introduce ourselves to the city and also to the mayor and the council members.
Well, thank you, Joe. What's the name of the church again, and where are you located?
We are, the name is Victory Outreach, and we're located at 9603 Belmont Avenue. We share with the neighborhood church building. On the backside, we have the big auditorium on the back, so we have services there on Wednesdays, Sundays.
Gotcha. Okay.
So I just wanted to introduce myself to everybody.
Well, thank you for introducing yourself. It's well appreciated.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna move on. Item 13, wait a minute, where am I? 13A. Okay. Went from 10 to 13. Thought I was missing a page. 13A, Mr. Smoot?
Brian's gonna take this one with, there's one minor correction, and he's gonna have a quick presentation for you guys.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Keep this very brief here. This is just gonna be Amendment Number Two to Agreement File Number 1050, and this is our second amendment to the agreement with PM Law Enforcement Services, which is Phil Marquez, who we've been working with since July 2024. Some of you may remember, he was here with me when we did our public safety assessment back in January, and we're planning on keeping him on board through the remainder of this fiscal year and through the end of next fiscal year. So this contract is set to expire, if approved, through June of 2026, and he'll be staying on board to review, to continue reviewing our sheriff operations, and most importantly, he'll be staying on board to helping to guide some of our, to guide the implementation of some of the public safety assessments, which we identified at our January meeting. And the one housekeeping item, which was there an error on the staff report, was in the title and the recommendation section of the staff report. We mentioned that it's gonna be authorized in the mayor to execute the Amendment Number Two to the agreement. Actually, we're asking for the City Council to authorize the city manager to execute Amendment Number Two of the agreement. So with that, if there aren't any questions, or if there are any questions, we'll be happy to answer anything.
Okay. Any questions to Mr. McNary to my right? No.
So my understanding is, Brian, that you're working shorthanded now because you've been moved up to the permanent position of our safety. So this isn't gonna change anything, and we're still looking for someone to replace your position, and this would be in addition to that, correct?
You are correct. So we are actively, have open recruitment right now for the vacant public safety manager position, which I vacated to then fill the director role, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, the council had a lot of discussions during that public safety assessment conversation about the potential for a future public safety center, and between Brian and I talking this through, we thought Phil's expertise with regard to Sheriff's Department operations and specifics of substations would be extremely helpful in that process. That's why we thought continuing this on might be a useful thing for us.
Makes sense.
Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. McNary, can you walk us through some of the deliverables here? I'm a little bit, you know, the initial contract here was to provide consultant work and come in and provide input as to where we are in our public safety department, how we can improve and so forth. So what exactly will be the deliverables here for the next two years?
The deliverables that Phil's working with me on right now, actually, we're going through it as we speak, some of the, two items which were identified specifically to give you examples that came out of the assessment was the NetWatch program and the ShotSpotter program. So currently, he has contacts with both of those vendors, and I've had meetings with both those vendors along with him as we go through this process to hopefully bring a larger project back to the council for the eventual implementation of those programs. So that's what Phil's doing currently right now, is working through with some of the recommendations which were provided by the council and working with myself to, how can we go about finding what those resources are that we may or may not have, and then successfully implementing those projects as part of the larger assessment that we identified.
Will he be taking some of the lead in some of this implementation, or?
Lead as in perhaps making initial inquiries on things, yes, and then bringing that back towards me for further review, yes.
Okay. So he's gonna be your spear essentially in the changes and transformations that you're trying to make over the course of the next two years, is what I'm hearing?
I'd say that's a good example to use, yes.
Okay.
And I would offer this as well. He's been an extremely useful liaison, if you will, between us and the Sheriff's Department in, as we've gone pretty in-depth in examining their operations in the city. For instance, are we getting the allocations of minutes that we contract for appropriately, and are they contracted in the right places? Are we allocating the resources that we have within our contract to the right types of crimes that are happening within our community? Phil has the expertise to review those things, being a former sheriff's captain, and has given us, you know, some guidance in that regard, too.
So to piggyback off of that, Mr. Smoot, one of the conversations that we talked about, one of the items that we talked about was the, for lack of a better phrase, the culture or the desire to modify and change, and, you know, if we were to move forward with some kind of our own new substation or that type of a structure and setting, is this something that he's gonna be capable of helping you execute?
I mean, changing of a culture is maybe less, is something that's less tangible that we can maybe measure, but for sure, there are many, many, many discussions I'm having with Phil, and pretty much there's nothing that's not on the table that is not being discussed.
Sounds good. Is there, just last question, Mr. Mayor, and regarding the first page on item, the no report being generated, are those reports gonna come through you instead of Mr. Marquez? Is that why?
Correct, yes. So that's part of what went into his reduction in his contract rate. If you look in the financial impact, it was reduced by $2,500, and that had to do with the fact that he's taking a little bit of a lesser role in what he's doing now for us as compared to what he was doing, and then ultimately, he is not gonna come back to this council with another formal evaluation report. That would all be flowing through me and reports being presented to this council through me.
Okay. Last, I thought I had one last, I thought I was done at the last question, but just the last one, this is the last one. Yeah, your timeline, do you plan on bringing that back in the near future as what this looks like? Because it was a meaty subject, the last council meeting when we went over all this stuff, or two meetings ago. Do you anticipate bringing it back at a certain point? Your, kind of like your goals and the topics that we talked about and how we're gonna execute?
Yes. So myself and Mr. Smoot have talked before, and we thought it would be in the best interest that at some point, maybe within the next six months, we come back with another six-month evaluation to see where we are at, what have we accomplished from the original assessment, and what we still need to do. And a lot of that will be, I think, hashed out in the upcoming budget cycle, so that's kind of what we're playing for right now, and so be on the watch for a lot of that. But yes, you'll probably be seeing at least another one, maybe two more, sort of progress updates from myself coming back to this council with status updates.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No questions? You good? Okay, what's your pleasure, guys?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the City Council of Bellflower to authorize the city manager to execute Amendment Number Two to Agreement File Number 1050 with PM Law Enforcement Consulting Services LLC in a form approved by the city attorney.
I'll second the motion.
A motion on the floor by Mayor Protem Sunny Santinas and a second by Councilmember Coops. Call roll.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye. Okay, item 13B, Mr. Smoot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're playing a little musical chairs here. I'm gonna ask Beth and Jim to come up and join. Just, Beth's gonna present part of this item, and I'll take the last part, and then Jim and Tay are both available to answer some questions if you have them, so.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The project site is located within the West Artesia specific plan. The project site is highlighted and hatched in blue. It has access off of Palm Street and is to the rear of several commercial uses and adjacent to the Wood Springs lot. It is located within the West Artesia specific plan, and as shown on the screen above, the West Artesia specific plan is in gray. That specific plan area spans from Lakewood Boulevard all the way west to Downey Avenue and is on the north side of Artesia Boulevard. The West Artesia specific plan was adopted in 2007, and it was a, or is, a freeway-oriented commercial zoning intended to facilitate redevelopment within the specific plan area. The plan was amended in 2011 and 2019. With a 2019 amendment, it was proposed as part of a multi-phase project for two hotels, and the changes included adding additional land uses such as hotels and extended stay hotels, and also was amended to establish development and operational standards for Ultimately, the extended stay hotel, Wood Springs Suites, was developed on the adjacent lot, and the second hotel on the project site, which was known as Comfort Inn at the time, was not developed, and the property remains vacant. To quickly go over the entitlements, on April 19th, 2019, the City Council approved a conditional use permit to allow the construction of a 69-unit, or sorry, a 69-room hotel, which was the Comfort Inn. Parking was provided on the site, and through an agreement, 11 parking spaces were provided on the adjacent lot for this site. Based on recent calculations, the hotel was expected to generate approximately $170,000 annually in transit occupancy tax. On May 26th, 2020, the City Council approved a one-year time extension. The applicant requested this at the time due to financial and economic constraints. And then again, on May 24th, 2021, or 2021, the City Council approved an additional one-year time extension. And as mentioned earlier, the hotel was not developed, and the site remains vacant. Proposed on the site is a self-storage facility. The project consists of a new four-story building, approximately 141,000 square feet. Again, the main access is off of Palm Street, which is on the north side of the property. The self-storage facility incorporates a modern design and has a secured access. This is a little bit different than your traditional self-storage facility in that everything is contained within one building. Your more traditional self-storage facilities, there's driveway access with roll-up doors to each container or to each unit, so this one differs from that drastically. There's approximately 105 square feet of rentable storage space, and 16 parking spaces are provided on-site. 11 shared parking spaces are on the Wood Springs Suites site, as mentioned, through an agreement. The applicant indicates that the facility is of a low-intensity use with insignificant traffic, minimal impacts on utilities, and low water and sewer needs. There are a couple of conceptual designs that the applicant has proposed. This is the elevation that's 11 shared parking spaces are on the Wood Springs Suites site, as mentioned, through an agreement. The applicant indicates that the facility is of a low-intensity use with insignificant traffic, minimal impacts on utilities, and low water and sewer needs. There are a couple of conceptual designs that the applicant has proposed. This is the elevation that's viewed from the north, which is along the 91 freeway and is viewed from Palm Street. This design more closely resembles the, or matches, the Wood Springs Suites Hotel, which is located adjacent to it. This is another design. It's more modern in design and is one of their more commercial design standards. This elevation is on the east side. The elevation above, again, more closely resembles the Wood Springs Suites. And then on the east side, again, this is the other option, which is the more modern Currently, the West Artesia specific plan does not allow for self-storage facilities, nor does it have any development standards or operational standards for them. So in order to allow this type of use to go on the property, a development agreement zone layover, also known as the dazzle, a zone change, and a general plan amendment, as well as a development agreement are required. For some more history regarding the dazzle, it was created in 2020, and the purpose was to allow for flexibility for otherwise strict development or sign regulations through adopted development agreements that are approved by the City Council. The dazzle is the mechanism to allow for the proposed use and establish development standards for self-storage facilities. The use, or the allowable uses and also the development standards would then be incorporated into a development agreement. A zone change is required to change the zoning from the West Artesia specific plan to the dazzle. It should be noted that with this zone change, the self-storage facility use and the development standards would only apply to this subject site, meaning it does not open up the entirety of the West Artesia specific plan to this use. A general plan amendment is also required since self-storage facilities are not currently consistent with the land use designation of commercial. The general plan amendment would change the land use designation from commercial to In regard to the California Environmental Quality Act, after review of the submitted application, the director, which is myself, recommends that the project be denied. The city did not conduct an environmental review of the project that complies with CEQA. Under the current CEQA guidelines for projects that are denied, it does not require environmental review, and this is subject to CEQA Guidelines 15061B4 and 15270. Should the City Council receive and file this report, the application will be processed in accordance with applicable law, including environmental review. The next slide is the development agreement terms, and the city manager will take this on.
Thanks, Beth. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, the applicant in this instance, understanding that the council in the past has approved entitlements required for two wholesale sites, one inclusive of this site, and understanding that there are benefits to the community associated with those approved entitlements, has proposed a structure for a conceptual development agreement, the terms of which are laid out here, and I'll go through them in some detail, but I should note that the applicant is here, so if you have specific questions for him, I'm sure he'd be more than happy to walk through those with you as well. Initially, the applicant has proposed an annual payment to the city of $170,000, which, as you can say, as Beth noted, is the approximation of what the transient occupancy tax off of the previously approved hotel would produce in revenue to the city at the 69 rooms that it was estimated to be constructed at. In addition to that, the applicant has proposed two structures, two scenarios under which there can be a buyout of that annual payment. And by the way, that annual payment is in perpetuity, every year in perpetuity. The first is a city-initiated buyout option to provide some flexibility to the city. It can be triggered anytime after five years. The city can trigger that on our own, a buyout provision of the net present value of that $170,000 annual payment. And the second is a developer-initiated buyout option after 10 years. The developer can initiate that option of that same net present value. The financials of that net present value lump sum, if you will, buyout are estimated at a net present value of approximately $2.125 million, and the way that's accomplished is effectively, how much money would it take to produce that amount annually on an ongoing basis at a particular discount rate? The applicant has proposed a discount rate, in this case, of 8%, and I understand there may be some questions as to how that calculation was made, so if you have specific questions on that, the applicant can answer some of those, and Tay is here to answer some of those calculations if you need specifics from our end as well. And obviously, the applicant has left the door open for an alternative hybrid structure of some of those terms, understanding that the council may desire flexibility in that if that's something you're interested in discussing. And of course, we're happy to answer any questions you have under this proposed structure, and I'm sure the applicant is as well.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just to tag team on the city manager's comments, and I'm sure Beth is going to go through the recommendations tonight, just as a reminder, you cannot approve the project tonight even if you wanted to. We have not conducted CEQA, we have not gone through the process, there are no decision or legislative actions in front of you to take. So if it's a receive and file item, we will process the application, or you can deny the project. Sorry for stealing your thunder.
No worries. Carl pretty much summed it up, but... So your first option is to deny the application, your second is to receive and file without taking action, and then the third is to alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. And as Carl mentioned, you can approve it because the proper environmental review has not been completed.
Got it.
And that concludes our presentation. Thank you, Mayor.
Does everybody understand that? Okay.
Yeah, I understand.
It's not something normally we do. That's why I said it. Can be confusing.
I was.
All right, let's start with questions to staff. Anybody ready?
I do.
Ms. Morris?
How long have we been, how long have we, how long have we been waiting for a hotel to come?
Well, it was approved in 2019, so it's been six years, approximately.
I would add...
I'm sorry, could you say that again, Beth? I was messing with the...
The CUP was approved in 2019, so we've been waiting about six years. The project died pretty much shortly, in 2022, that's when the project died, because they received a one-year time extension, they couldn't get the financing in place for a hotel, and ultimately, it was marketed for a hotel for several reasons, and nobody ever decided to submit an application to develop.
And has anyone recent times came forward for a hotel at all?
There have been a few inquiries on it, but one of the, there's issues with the number of rooms and the new financing environment that we're in right now, and they would need more than 69 rooms in order to make this project financially feasible.
That's all I have at the moment, sorry. Yeah, I'm good.
Can I piggyback off of that, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you. Mr. Delanga, on that note, regarding the number of units or the number of rooms, if there were to be an increase, the project, to make it feasible, would more than likely require a substantial amount more parking, which obviously is a landlocked area, so you're going, it's going to run into potential conflicts to be able to meet the parking requirements?
That is correct. Beth could also comment on this. We kind of did some calculations prior to that. If you're looking at between 100 and 120 rooms, you're almost doubling the amount of parking spaces they're going to need. The developer, developers want the parking, and in addition, we, the code requires the parking.
Okay. I'll have more questions, but I just wanted to piggyback off of that one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This way, anybody?
I think when you gave the answer to Wendy about the timeline, there was two years lost because of the COVID. It wasn't just natural financials. And then the, they lost their financing because nobody was doing hotels at that time, so that wasn't a natural event. I just wanted to piggyback on the answer there. So when I read this here, I understand deny the project, if we were to vote to receive and file this report without taking action, does that still put this in motion? Is that an approval?
It's certainly not an approval. You can't approve this item because the necessary environmental reviews haven't been done. Having said that, the applicant obviously has an application in front of us. If the council receives and files this item, staff can process the application to its completion, negotiate out an ultimate development agreement, bring all of that back to you through the normal process that you guys would go through, a normal public hearing process to do those usual entitlements. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so what I wanted to understand is that if, if we were to vote to deny the project, it's over and done. The second one is, it still has light in the tunnel?
Correct.
I mean, not anything final, but it still keeps it alive.
Correct.
Okay. I wanted to understand that. So back to the parking question. Jim, you mentioned that there have been some changes with the Edison Company and how they use their right-of-way. Does that pose any potential parking additions to their new viewpoint on parking beneath power lines?
It does. We've had some preliminary discussions with them, and they are more open to allowing for temporary parking in that way, but it is Edison, and things change on a whim there, so it's, we have positive conversations, but you never know.
But at this time, it's not as absolute as it once was, where there would be no parking in that area.
Correct.
Yeah, the conversations we've had with Edison up until now, up until recently, the conversation has pretty much been a hard no on any kind of parking in there. In recent conversations, there has been at least an open door to some sort of overflow parking. If we had uses in this area that needed additional parking, but they weren't dedicated parking that's necessary for that use, in other words, that wasn't parking required as part of the entitlement, but if they had it on a, you know, let's say they had a conference center or something, and they needed some additional parking for that temporary period of time or overnight, they could use that as overflow parking. Is that helpful?
So Wood Springs currently has the allocated amount of parking needed for their amount of rooms, correct?
Yes, they do.
Are they over or under or exactly right at the number?
They are actually overparked by 19 spaces, 11 of which are dedicated to the adjacent site, which would be this project site.
So what are the numbers currently, if a 100-unit apartment, I mean, hotel were to be proposed, how many parking spaces would that require?
For 100 rooms?
It seems to be the magic number to attract a potential.
Sure. For 100 rooms, it's estimated at 92 parking spaces, and that means that 40 additional spaces would be required.
Do you feel as, now, did we create that number, the city create the number that is appropriate for the number of rooms?
Correct. So when we amended the specific plan back in 2019, we also established the development standards for hotels. And at that time, likely, we compared the parking requirements for hotels and compared it to other cities and what the industry standard was, and that's how we came up with our parking requirements. Currently, in the West Artesia specific plan, the parking is .8 spaces per guest room, one space for every 10 guest rooms for employees, and then if there's public open space, so for example, if there's a ballroom associated with a hotel to rent out for weddings, or there's some type of common space that's available to the public, then that parking ratio is at one parking space for every 300 square feet of floor area.
Could the, we could amend that again if we wanted to, to get the magic number to 100 for the potential new building, correct?
Correct. We can. We could do another specific plan amendment if we chose, if we choose.
So there's two wild cards here. The potential of having, do a deal with Edison for additional parking, which is, again, like Jim said, you'd never know with Edison Company. And we could change our rules. I've never noticed where the Wood Springs has had a full parking lot, even though they may have had a full, they're running pretty good numbers there for occupancy, and so I don't know if they would miss having several of their parking spaces. That's, again, that's just up for discussion. I wouldn't want to impact their building or their business by having a second one there, but the same, because everybody's got to have a place to park. But that's all the questions I have at this time.
Inez, go ahead.
I guess the parking is the topic for right now. So let me just clarify one thing. You said 49 additional parking spaces? Is that right?
For 100, if 100-room hotel was to be developed on the site, 92 parking spaces would be required. That means they'd have to get an additional 40.
40?
40.
Does that count the 11 that's allocated from Wood Springs currently?
It does.
It does? Okay.
And again, these are approximates. It's really dependent on how the site is designed ultimately, but this was our best-case scenario, because you could technically have a majority of the lot parking, but then what that would result in is a really skinny building, several stories in the air to accommodate...
And I have some observation as Councilmember Coops, because I noticed that Wood Springs is basically, I think they have very good occupancy rate at this time. Every time I drive by there, the parking lot is almost full, especially on the east side of the building, but not on the south side by, on Artesia. And I know talking with the manager a couple of months ago at an event, they were very pleased with the occupancy rate. I think they're running about 90, at least 95% occupancy, so they're very pleased. City manager question, when you said about Edison's parking can be used for some other needs, what about if, let's say hypothetically, if Wood Springs would set up a, an event center, a conference center?
Yeah, like I said, the conversations with Edison...
Would that kind of work with them?
There, remember, when Edison allows for uses on their particular rights-of-way, they usually do that in small blocks of time, and they don't particularly like permanent uses. So their conversation with us is if we were to look at something like that, it couldn't be, if it were parking specifically, it couldn't be parking that was required as part of an entitlement, i.e. if, if a development went in and it needed 50 spaces, let's say, and 20 of those spaces, required spaces, were provided on that Edison lot, if those parking spaces went away and Edison decided to close off their lot again, that use would now become non-compliant, right? It wouldn't meet its own parking requirements. That's what they don't want, that's the situation they don't want to have. But if we required 50 spaces and they said, hey, we have a conference center, and every once in a while, we need some overflow parking to park on that lot, Edison may consider that.
Okay.
Is that helpful?
Okay, very good. Thank you. Going back to the, well, not application, the idea here, how many employees would they employ for self-storage?
Oh, that's a good question for the applicant, but it's very few.
Okay. And do we know how many employees are employed by Wood Springs Suites?
I think it's about three employees on a given shift. The number of employees there is low as well.
Wood Springs?
Yes, for Wood Springs.
That's on any given shift, not total.
Yeah, I know. So three shifts, so only nine, nine employees? Did you say three?
I would think housekeeping would be two of them at least.
In the daytime, there would be more.
Yeah, and then, and then custodian, and then reception.
Maintenance man.
Mayor Protem, let me take a look at, oh, actually, I'm sorry. It's actually between Wood Springs, I'm sorry, so this is, I have the staff report in front of me for the former Comfort Inn. The former Comfort Inn was eight to 12 employees, so I don't know exactly how many Wood Springs Suites had, but I do recall it being a lower number than that.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. That's all I have for now, Mr. Mayor.
Eight to 12 employees, we don't know daily. That's just for the complete seven-day operation, I bet.
Correct.
And keep in mind, Wood Springs is a extended-stay type hotel as opposed to Comfort Inn, that was more of your standard operation hotel.
So regarding the Edison right-of-way, since we were talking about that kind of thorough or whatever, it was a vision that I had, unlock the locked-in parcel, the old JJ truck lot, by having circulation, because you only have right turn into that lot, it kind of sets there, and by having an egress between the high-tension lines... And by having an egress between the high-tension lines and maybe some parking. And that's what Jim was doing. And my last conversation, I think with Jim and Ryan, was any parking that they do allow there, or that, whatever they allow to, it will not be stuff that has to be, can be counted to any development. It was an absolute no, is what I recall, that you guys told me.
Yeah, that's correct. They don't want that as part of an entitlement required for a project.
Something short, we can't add it to that.
And keep in mind, Edison has very specific requirements as far as spacing from their, you know, towers. So, the number of parking spaces does get limited there, but this is a pretty big area as well.
On the site, can you put the site plan up of the storage facility? I'm looking at the, yeah, that there. Is that going to be continuous access for recipical parking from Palm Street coming out on Artesia to, in front of the WoodSpring Suites Hotel, or is it going to be at one point blocked off and so there's no flow-through traffic? I'm just curious is all.
My understanding is that there would be reciprocal access through the Artesia, or from Artesia Boulevard through the WoodSpring Suites property to the-
To Palm Street.
To Palm Street.
I can clarify that with the applicant later. The reason we got this remnant parcel here, I know it's not Councilmember Morse's fault, but it's the rest of our fault. We approved, or at least I did, I approved, two hotels. Yes, we're getting two hotels. And circumstances came up and next thing you know, they weren't building them and then we see them on the, on the commercial market that the lots for sale with entitlements. And then we had somebody come to planning and say, we would like to build one. We kind of blew it by letting them build one and not the other. We entitled two hotels? So, we had two hotels. And then we let build one and, ah, we don't want to do that one, we're going to sell that property. This is why we're here tonight, is because we blew it. I've been on the council as long as that specific plan was, I didn't, I didn't approve it, but it was approved in the prior regime before I got on the council in 2007. I wasn't, no, I wasn't. It was before that. It was my press, my press assessor in my seat-
We were in the planning commission.
Yeah, okay, planning, yeah, that's right, yeah, we were.
2007, for the record.
For the record, when big boxes were going, and to this woman in public comments tonight, we have done no good to anybody or any property on that whole specific plan from Downey to Lakewood Boulevard on Artesia. Point said, you guys know about all the underground utilities that we started like fifteen years ago? You know, we were underground, we're going to underground the utilities. What was told to me is we're going to underground them and then we're going to get some, because that's what development does and they bring in. Are you guys aware that the underground utilities aren't done? And then, I believe they're never going to get done? The electricity, the high, you know, the electric juice is in there, but we have chainsawed poles, buddy poles or saw poles, just cut off and we have the phone lines and the cables hanging there. It looks a little better, I guess, but we blew it there too. I've been asking our city manager, so what's the status on that? And nobody really knows. Why, we spend all this money, it comes out of our, what is it, Rule 202, 502? Rule 28. Yeah, there's, there's money that's on everybody's electric bill, goes in this pot. And you can borrow against it, we've done it before. One of the good examples is the Laundra Boulevard. Laundra Boulevard from border to border is all underground. Or to Woodruff, to the east, the west border, is underground. That got completed, not Artesia. I don't think it's been worked on in ten years, it's my guess. I don't have no documents, I'm going to get staff to look at it, but we blew it there too. This should be, this was set to be in plans of, of a specific plan of an area that we were going to make better. And we flubbed it up, I believe. We got a beautiful hotel out of it and now we're dealing with this. We have a remnant, this is a remnant parcel as far as I'm concerned back here. We have situations back there that we were going to cure with Passage Street. It's been looking pretty good lately for the stuff that's been going on there. Habitat for Humanity. That one there was going to be the savior of this whole area. And now we're going to have a nationwide corporate building that's going to be three or four stories there and they're going to put, there's Hudson California Habitat for Humanity there off the freeway for, remember Gus Guys? Am I, am I right? Well, that's never coming too. We let them in, we changed our specific plan to let them come in so Bellflower can be the, all it is is a glorified recycling store. I'm just saying, this is what we, what we've done up here. So, it's a wonder hotels don't want to come. We've been waiting a long time for a remnant parcel. I just want to set the groundwork for that because technically, that's the way I feel. That's all my notes. The hundred and seventy thousand, let's get in the TOT here, the hundred and seventy thousand a year, so we have the right to do a buyout for five year, in five years?
Mr. Mayor, the way the applicant has proposed the structure as it stands here, and obviously, the council can have input on this discussion, but the way the applicant's proposed it is a hundred and seventy thousand dollar annual payment and after five years, the city can trigger a net present value at that time. Whatever the net present value of that perpetual payment is at that point, that would be the buyout amount as calculated by the applicant, that's 2.125 million. After ten years, the applicant-
And the applicant, which would be, yeah. The applicant due to one, on the same eight percent-
Discount rate.
Got it.
Yeah.
Discount rate or whatever it is. And so, do we, on the buyout portion, do both parties got to get, agree for the sale? Like selling a bond or is it?
As it's been proposed, it can be in either of those options, either one can trigger.
Because when I see one hundred and seventy in perpetuity, that's forever, isn't it? Okay, forever, or get it over with, here's a one lump sum and invest it and, you can invest the lump sum to-
Produce it.
Produce, produce some.
Effectively, that's what it is. But yes, it is structured as a perpetual payment. If neither of the parties wanted to do that, and again, this could all be negotiated in the future, but if neither of the parties triggered that option, then the perpetual payment just continues.
That, what else? We beat the parking to death, I think, didn't we? Oh. Somebody with the hundred, the hundred-room hotel, if one went there, was it a hundred or was it a hundred and, a little bit, or a hundred and two, a hundred and four? How many stories is that, is what I was getting at? Was there a story, how many stories tall was it proposed?
It was around five.
So, five stories, okay.
Comfort Inn was three stories.
It was three stories, so.
I would offer the caveat with that, it depends on the ultimate structure of-
Right, I get it, yeah.
Because it has to go higher.
I'm trying to get an analogy for a four-story storage facility box versus the hotel. That's where I was going with that. Okay, that's all I have. Anybody, did I draw out any questions?
Mr. Mayor, just-
Mr. Sanchez, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff, do you have any other additional information at this time regarding possible operations or of this applicant or all these questions that should be left to the applicant?
Councilmember Sanchez, I think it's best answered by the applicant. Yeah, especially in relations to the management and operation of the facility.
I too, I have concerns, right? At the same time, I think there are always ways to find viable options for those concerns. I think I've been very gung-ho about the hotel. You know, we've talked about that, many of us have talked about that. We've talked about the desire for this area to be revitalized and I think it's going to be an interesting conversation, but at the end of the day, what is the end goal for the area? What does it look like to be revitalized? Are there ways and avenues that we can be creative about that? I'm open to ideas at this point. I don't know when a hotel will come and play, if it ever would come. And I think it's just, I want to have an open conversation about this area. I know I've had conversations with residents about it. They are very grateful for the work that we've been doing on that neighboring in that area with bulky items, with, with some of the other items in that area, just cleaning it up and helping maintain. They're very pleased with that and they see the direction that we've been taking it. And so, the question is, how do we ensure, whatever we decide to do here, it ends up moving that needle even further in that direction of continuing to improve the area? Okay, so I'll leave it at that for now. I have a lot of questions for the applicant, thank you.
All right, let's, oh, go ahead, Mr. Coops.
So, this is a financial question, so I'll need Tate Ree for this one.
Ooh, the big guns.
Oh, yeah. We haven't heard from him all year, so. Good evening. So, Tate, you see the potential here is at one point, we would have a buyout at 2.125 million and if the city were to receive that, we would be able to generate at eight percent, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. Is that my understanding of what you've read here?
If you accept the present value to be 2.125 million dollars, then what you said is correct. The fundamental question is, is a reasonable estimate of the net present value?
That's my question. Do you have a lot of investments that pay eight percent currently?
No, no.
Have you ever had any?
Actually, the is, to get to the technical aspect of that calculation, they try to make the city whole for the lost revenue, lost TOT revenue. So, they're estimating that to be a hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year. The first question is, will it be a hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year, every year, for the duration of the project's use for life?
Knowing the value will continue to go down.
Is the TOT going to increase or will it remain static, like that assumes?
Yeah, one seventy won't be one seventy ten years from now.
Right. So, there's a cost increase factor that's not accounted for there. As well as the discounting, if you use the eight percent discount rate, it assumes high-risk project uncertainty involved in terms of revenue stream. But if you assume there's a more solid project, solid revenue stream, then can you substitute eight percent with the city's investment rate of return? So, different assumptions, different factors will yield different net present values. So, that is assuming a risky revenue stream, which is static. But if you assume growing TOT revenue that the developers try to make up for the city's loss and then using lower risk discount rate, then the present value will be a lot higher. I guess it depends on how you see the project.
Well, I would estimate it would be double. If you were to get, what I read of what we're receiving on our investments is less than five, somewhere between four to four and a half.
Right.
So, if I use that liquidity, take eight, just cut it and double it, say now we need 4.25.
You're correct. At a hundred and seventy thousand, if you say investment rate of return use that, then it would be 4.2 million dollars, like you were saying, double.
That's presuming the hundred and seventy is static.
That's, yeah, and so, there's another, you know, you could also have an inflationary value. Say it goes up three percent a year, or cost of living. That would certainly be a potential requirement as well.
If you factor that, then it would double again, so it would be eight million dollars. So, we're using different assumptions, then the present value would increase, double, quadruple.
Thank you, that's what my question is. I've learned from our city attorney to ask questions I know the answer to. But I wanted you to present it instead of me, so. Thank you, Tate.
Thank you. Just a follow-up, but when, when I was reading the staff report on the eight percent discount rate, it sounded good in terms of, oh, wow, it's eight percent. But if you look at the bottom line, a high, the higher discount rate, the less money it's needed to be the principal, basically. So, follow-up question on, do we know about our TOT rates compared to our neighboring cities, by any chance?
Jim, can you, can you answer that question? TOT rates versus our other cities?
Sure. So, Bellflower's TOT rate is at nine percent.
Nine percent, okay.
And if you look at our bordering cities, Artesia is at 12.5, Cerritos is at 12, Downey at nine, Lakewood is at eight percent and Norwalk at 10 percent. Paramount does not have a TOT tax. And that, we also have, I also did some regional cities. So, Alhambra is 12, City of Bell 12, Bell Gardens is eight, Carson is at nine, Compton 7.5, Cudahy eight percent, Hawaiian Gardens nine percent. And if you look a little bit, Los Alamitos is eight, Seal Beach is 12, Cypress is 10 percent, so some of those Orange County border cities with LA County, those are some of the numbers as well. So, is that enough? I have more?
Yeah, it's more than enough. So, the bottom line is, so there's a potential for the TOT to go up. Correct?
As rooms go up too.
There's plenty of rooms, okay. And then, what will it take for the TOT rate to go up?
Yeah, that would be a voter-approved measure that the council would have to perform.
Okay, okay.
Would that be the same as running the business license tax through all the same time?
You could do it at the same time.
At the same time.
Two different items, but yeah, you could do it at the same time.
Okay, all right, very good, that's all I have for now.
Mr. Mayor, one more question to staff.
Go right ahead.
Regarding the zoning, Ms. Obah, can you go back to the Dazzle and the Wasp? There's a section where you talk about, and I want to be, is it, I say it right? Wasp. Is it my understanding that it can be specific to this area? We are not necessarily opening it up citywide or regional-wide or anything like that? Did I get that clear?
Yes, that's, that's correct, Councilmember Sanchez. So, the entire gray area is the Wasp.
Okay.
The hatched blue area, that's also located in the Wasp, but it's being proposed to be changed to Dazzle.
And Dazzle can be, for lack of a better word, spot-zoned into different areas of the city?
We can create, it's a floating zone.
It's a floating zone.
So, we can create our own uses that are allowed on that site and development standards and it has to be through a development agreement.
Very good, thank you.
But you are correct, it's only for the blue hatched site.
Very good, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else?
I got one more. To take Victor's words. So, Elizabeth, if we, do we know what it costs for the construction of the WoodSpring's hundred-room hotel? Do you know what the final number was on what they spent? Or is it a hundred thousand room?
I don't know the exact number, but it's in the millions for sure.
Oh, yeah.
I believe it was in the fifteen million to twenty million range.
What'd you say?
Victor's all seven.
You couldn't build the Bates Motel for seven million? So, expect that this, if a Comfort Inn came back and said, hey, we'll do it, but we're going to do, we need a hundred rooms or it doesn't pencil out, you know? So, they would expect to spend twenty to twenty-five million dollars. Now, I expect all of our development fees apply to a hotel, just like they do to residential? I mean, we're still looking for our park fee, our art fee, all the things that are added on in order to make the city better after the-
I believe that they do because we do have a commercial category in our development impact fees and this would likely fall under that.
I would say this, you're, remember, through this process, a couple of things, you're negotiating a development agreement. So, as part of that negotiating development agreement and the community benefits that come along with that negotiate, that development agreement, fees can also be subject to that too. So, the city council can negotiate with those fees through the development process. Keep in mind, because we're ultimately coming through with a development and the council would have to approve a development agreement in this, that's what sets the base- a development agreement in this, that's what sets the basis and the, for the zoning and the operational and development standards. And also the perpetual payment if it was under the proposed structure. A development agreement is required under state law to have a specific timeframe. It becomes difficult under that, under a specified timeframe development agreement to establish a payment in perpetuity. It's part of the reason for some of the structure that we have. At some point, the city may, it may be beneficial to the city to trigger that. It may be beneficial to the developer to trigger that. But we do have to set that specific timeframe. If we had to recover that on an ongoing basis after that period of that development agreement, it may become difficult to do that. So all of those things through the development agreement become negotiable, but it does have to have that specific timeframe.
So where I'm going with this, when the applicant comes forward, one of us will probably ask, what do you think the value of this property is going to be? In terms of what are you going to spend to build it? And I expect it to be less than if it were hotel rooms. I'm expecting, I may be wrong, but based on human habitation and storage, it shouldn't be as much. If our fees are probably, when you add them all up, is it 6% for public art, or for Parks and Rec? We got three or four different classifications of fees developers have responsibility for.
Councilmember Coops, yes, we do. So it's a transportation impact fee, a public safety impact fee, park fee, and a public facility fee. And when you recently redid the impact fees, it was based on a cost per square foot. So it definitely ranges between the residential to the commercial.
Is the commercial less or equal to the residential?
I believe it's less. Well, it depends, so it's less if it's a park fee, right? So it depends on the fee.
Okay, it's a sliding scale.
It is.
So what I'm thinking is, we have to consider the fees that are going to be generated from, this is a massive project. And you've seen the reports we get, we just got our recent one. And you read how much money we collect from the homeowners that build and channel, remodel, or build from new. It's significant. And what we're doing there is we're providing additional places for the kids to play. The part, and I think the school district's got some fees on there. You've got to have rooms for the children to be educated. Now, if we went with the idea, if we left this open to go forward with the idea of a storage, it will not have an impact on parks or electricity or, you know, all the things that we are going to be needing money for. Likewise, I don't think a hotel has that impact either. The kids that stay in that hotel are not here to play in the park. You know, but although they could, you know, it's not taken, they have that right. And those, I believe that if you add up those fees, and PJ, you know what, what's the park fee? You know what it is. No, Tay, Tay, no. Tay, come back up here. What? Oh, let's pass the buck to Anna. Yeah. We'll have the whole room giving testimony before this is over. Anna, what's our, what is the park fees? And maybe you can define what Elizabeth was explaining about commercial versus residential.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. So park fees are only applicable to single-family and multifamily development. Right now, it's $17.20 per square foot of a building. That's a single family. For a multifamily development, it's $20.58 per square foot.
Okay. Now, how about the other fees? We've got an art fee.
Public art fee is 1% of the development.
Is there any escape on that if you're commercial rather than a hotel?
I believe for art fee, you could dedicate an art project, correct, Beth?
Right, that's a choice of the developer.
Correct. And the public art fee, it's not an impact fee. So it is applicable to all projects and it's a 1% project valuation. Or it has to equal 1% of the total project valuation.
Okay.
So in addition to the park fee, there's also the public facilities fee. So for a commercial development, it's 45 cents per square foot of a building. Public facilities fee, I'm sorry, transportation facilities fee, for a commercial development, it's $8.66. And lastly, public safety facilities fee is 85 cents per square foot. That's it.
Elizabeth, so from what you just learned, looking at the square footage of the building being proposed, and knowing now which are applicable, can you give the council an idea of what kind of fees would come forward? Not knowing, we don't even need to know the value of the building. Apparently, it's just square footage.
Why don't we do this, make it easier instead of doing that? Why don't we find out what the fees were on Woodford Springs, the Springs, Wood Springs Hotel? We should have that in the computer somewhere. Wouldn't you think? We can look up to all the fees that would.
I don't have it with me. We'd have to dig it up.
Maybe finance has.
But I can, if you give me a few minutes.
Yeah, I mean, not right now. I'd done a minute, but within, we're going to hear from the applicant.
I'm trying to get an idea of the, you know, we were talking about the money part here. The ongoing 170, and Tay brought up a good point about inflation. I brought up a point about the time value of money as well. And now I'm looking at what do these projects bring forth in terms of monies to the city for development? And, because we're in kind of a different place now with mini-storage or storage than we have been before. What applies, what doesn't?
I think finance can go back to their records.
And maybe I'm barking up the wrong tree. Are you interested in finding out what I asked about?
Yeah, I think the, if we can find out what, we may have negotiated fees with Wood Springs before.
That's what I was going to say. Keep in mind, you, through this process, like I said, you're negotiating a development agreement. So regardless of what your fee structure is currently, the council can determine what its fee structure should be for this project, however you determine it should be for this project. So, I mean.
Now, when we do that, is there a maximum based on, we have already an idea of what we're asking?
Through a development, the council can certainly get an idea of what its current fee structure would provide for a given project. But again, through the development agreement, you're negotiating the community benefits that, that make that project viable.
We can find that later. And let me clarify, the parks fee, that's not on hotel rooms, is it? It's residential. You said she didn't have any, parks fee is the biggest fee there is.
Park fee would not be applicable.
Yeah, so there's no parks fees on.
On either project.
On a hotel or the, or the storage. And that's always the biggest one. That's, you know, our constituents always beat us up on those park fees. It's a big expense.
But I think.
And school fees too. There's no school fees on commercial, just residential.
Pays that because of their projects, like Filework paid it, City Ventures.
They're residential.
Right.
Yeah, school fees and parks fees are the biggest.
Right. And I'm not sure what Bellflower Unified expects.
So those fees, yeah, so the fees are.
It's also worth noting that when we're charging development impact fees, those monies aren't going into a general fund necessarily for, to be used for any purpose.
They're put aside for the future.
Correct. They're assigned for that specific purpose, like a public safety fee would then go into a fund to be used for a public safety facility in the future. A parks would be used for a park facility fee in the future, or a parks facility in the future.
For upgrading their infrastructure.
They're not necessarily general fund money that we use for anything. Having said that, within a development agreement, you have the flexibility to provide community benefits however the council sees fit. So you have the ability to negotiate that however you need to.
Okay. So if we had, if we wanted to sweeten the pot, say if we're all up here and thinking, we're really waiting for a hotel, we could put aside all the fees for a Comfort Inn?
You could put aside, through a development agreement, you could put aside whatever fees the council felt appropriate and structure the impact fees however you felt you needed to.
You understand, you show more love one way or than the other, you know?
I would, I would say it this way, the council could determine that one use might have, standing alone, more community benefits than another use. I mean, we do that when you're considering zoning in the first place all the time, so.
Anyway, I just want to throw that on the table.
Got it. Okay, I think we should hear from the applicant. We good? Okay, applicant, come on up. Please sign in and.
Yes.
Put your name in the mic for record when you're ready to go.
My name is Jason Borg. Hello, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. I prepared a semi-brief statement on the project, which I, if I could read the statement and then we can proceed with questions.
We'll hear from you, what you want to say, and then, then we can go back and forth, I guess.
So nearly two years ago, I first approached the city about developing the site. Since then, discussions have continued, but progress has been slow due to the city's preference to wait for a hotel. Yet despite the delays, I'm still here because I believe that this self-storage facility is the right solution and the highest and best use for this parcel. I want to do business in this city and contribute to the growth with a thoughtfully designed, well-maintained development. Through our development agreement, this project offers a significant financial benefit to the city, ensuring a steady revenue stream while addressing longstanding security and blight issues. There's an opportunity to take an underutilized parcel and turn it into a high-quality development that enhances the surrounding neighborhood and strengthens the local economy. I appreciate the chance to share my vision with you, and I look forward to demonstrating why this project is the best path forward for the site. There are clear reasons why this parcel has gone undeveloped for six years. Developers rarely build hotels with fewer than 100 rooms because they typically don't generate the necessary revenue to cover costs. This parcel simply cannot accommodate a hotel of that scale while meeting parking and circulation requirements. The Caltrans easement along the highways is another, is another issue attracting encampments, drug use, sanitation problems, and spillover that negatively impact the neighboring community. The ongoing challenge reinforces the need for a use that secures the site and deters crime. A self-storage facility will achieve, well, a self-storage facility will actively mitigate these issues by improving security and site maintenance. Traffic and circulation present major challenges. The site has a shared access easement with the Wood Springs Suites on Artesia Boulevard, which already manages its own hotel-related traffic. A second high-traffic use on this site would add approximately 576 additional trips per day, further straining circulation. Palm Street, Palm Street is the most viable hotel entrance and is designed to support commercial uses. However, additional traffic will continue, ongoing issues such as speeding, abandoned vehicles, and general congestion along this street. The site's been on the market through three economic cycles. Pre-COVID, COVID, and post-COVID. The pre-COVID cycle was a decent cycle. The post-COVID cycle was a zero-interest rate environment where the LA County and Southern California saw the development and the permitting of more hotels than it did probably for 10 or 15 years prior. That's the years of 2021 and 2022. California hotel developers are among the most sophisticated in the country. If this site were a viable location for a hotel, experienced developers would have already identified the opportunity, acquired the land, and built a hotel in Bellflower. But the fact that they have not done so strongly suggests that the market does not support a successful hotel development at this location. Whether it's 69 rooms or 100 rooms, I think that the site is not really viable for a hotel. We are proposing a state-of-the-art, climate-controlled, self-storage facility. One that's secure, energy-efficient, architecturally appealing. This is not just a storage facility, it's an opportunity to turn an underutilized, unsecured parcel into a community asset and a catalyst to revitalize the entire area and community. This project works for Bellflower. It have a minimal impact. Unlike, unlike a high-traffic commercial use, the project generates low traffic, low utility usage, minimal strain on city infrastructure. We're going to build a state-of-the-art facility with enhanced security features. 24/7 high-resolution, 24/7 high-resolution security cameras. We'll have about 30 security cameras on the premises, monitoring what's going on on our site, but also what's going on on Palm Street in the cul-de-sac. Motion centers to prevent unauthorized activity, controlled gated access, well-lit pathways, and common areas. Our security presence will help eliminate crime, encampments, loitering, and illegal dumping. We recently hired Black Knight Patrol to patrol Palm Street three months ago. And we've already received positive feedback from neighboring residents, one of which, who's here tonight, Frankie Miranda, to speak on behalf of the neighboring community. Our facility creates a safer, cleaner, and more functional environment. The project is about more than just storage. It's about taking an ongoing problem for the city and turning it into a long-term asset. Bellflower currently lacks a modern self-storage facility, forcing residents and businesses to take their money elsewhere. Many residents store their belongings in neighboring cities where they also run errands and spend money, shifting economic activity outside of Bellflower. Our project is going to be a $25 million construction. There will be substantial property tax contributions that strengthen Bellflower's long-term fiscal health. And we're offering $170,000 in annual revenue through a development agreement. The project is about realistic, long-term benefits for Bellflower. This parcel has been vacant for many years because of site limitations. The city and neighboring communities have faced challenges with crime, encampments, and lost tax revenue. The project presents an opportunity to change that dynamic by bringing a secure, well-maintained development that benefits the city long-term. Through our proposal, the city and community get the benefits of a secure storage, plus the economic upside of a hotel via our development agreement. Without the potential challenges a hotel could bring to the area, it's a win-win. Waiting for a hotel that has shown no market viability over the past six years means continuing to leave this parcel vacant, underutilized, and plagued by ongoing security and blight issues. Moving forward with this self-storage project will catalyze further development. When an area sees new investment, it attracts additional interest from business and developers who see commitment to growth and revitalization. A clean, secure, and well-maintained property will enhance the surrounding environment, making future development, including a hotel elsewhere in the city, more attractive. In short, supporting this project is not settling. It's setting the stage for more high-quality investment in Bellflower. I appreciate your time and consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any question, any good questions yet?
The employees, we were going over that. How many people?
Three.
You stated that 25 million is the magic number to build it.
25 million is, yes, is approximately, that's our, our cost to build the facility.
How long would it take you to build it?
About a year, year and change.
And is it access 24/7? Can people get to their stuff during certain hours or is it open all the time?
It'll be open, it'll be open with employee, with employees on premises between, you know, it changes per property, but let's say between nine and six, and then access will start at 6:00 AM and end at 10:00 PM. And I know, I heard the question earlier, but it would be gated on both sides. So there is a shared access easement with, with the Wood Springs on Artesia. We would have to discuss with the Wood Spring if they would allow us to have signage and have people drive in off Artesia, but our address would be on Palm Street.
Have you built one of these before? And if so, where is it located?
Our group has built a few. We have one in San Diego. We have another project in Cathedral City. And we have two others under.
And they're about the same size and shape?
Yes, similar size.
Okay, that's all I have at this time.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, just to clarify one thing, the timeframe within which to construct the project, keep in mind that under a normal circumstance, we'd be here talking with you, considering the entitlements for a project. In this circumstance, we still have to go do those. So there is that timeframe involved here as well.
I get it.
Yeah, I was saying, you know.
I'm just doing construction.
Entitlements after permitting, once we shovel and ground, that, you know, about a year to 14 months.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Borg, thank you for being here this evening, and thank you for bringing this topic up. So I have some major concerns, and I think some of us feel the same way. And I'll speak to myself, one of the reasons why I would prefer to hold out, or I have preferred to hold out for a hotel is because I believe that this area, to your point, has had blight, has had issues in that general area, unwanted activities, undesirable activities due to the lack of traffic. And I think that we believe, I believe at least, that with one hotel, it improved the situation, more visibility, people driving through, just a little bit more light, a little bit more security, a little bit more activity, right? people driving through, just a little bit more light, a little bit more security, a little bit more activity, right? I believe that a second hotel with higher traffic would help move that further. Just because it would bring again more people into the area and just naturally speaking, when there's more visibility, more people present, crime usually tends to be reduced in a certain way because there's eyes on things, right? So you touched on a couple of things, and if you don't mind elaborating a little bit, how would you, as a partner in that area, provide a community benefit? And of course, I understand there has to be a nexus to this project. How would you provide a community benefit so that the neighbors there, the residents who live in that area, or the people who end up staying at Wood Springs Hotel, feel some of this thoughts that I have, feel that there is a little bit more safety, that there is a little bit more activity in that area, because you're talking about lower traffic numbers.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think I don't know if there was a reduction in any of the crime or any of the issues that the residents and the business owners had on Palm Street after the Wood Springs opened. I know that from speaking to community members, people stated that what you guys have done with clearing the brush next to the highway was the greatest thing that that anyone's done for that area in years. People are also really excited about the security that that we hired for the street to help move people off the street, get abandoned cars off the street. It seems like there's less people driving there at night and doing whatever it is that they're doing, just with the minimal effort that we've already put forward. I think if if our plans are and we're and we're allowed to to build this facility there, and we're investing and putting, making a twenty-five million dollar plus the agreement investment in the city, our our plan would be to make sure that, you know, that street and that area was fully secured. You know, we wouldn't want our customers and our surrounding community members to really be dealing with the issues that they're dealing with right now, especially if we're on that block. You know, we plan on putting gates up to making, making sure that people kind of can't move in and out between the Wood Springs and Palm Street. I understand the the idea that kind of more activity would enhance the community, but I think at the moment, it's it's not. We would, you know, with the development agreement, you know, how the council decides to use that, whether in in this district to clean up this area or in other parts of the city is really kind of up to the council. The way we kind of envisioned this development agreement was like, okay, this is, this is what we're we're kind of putting our best foot forward to offer. And, you know, there was a solution in there to kind of to break it up where we would spend some money.
So, Mr. Borg, let me stop you there. Let's focus on on the public safety aspect, because that's what I'm talking about, right?
Gotcha.
The the immediate nexus there. You talked about security coming, you talk about, what does that look like? Tell us more about that.
Yeah, so we have our thirty cameras on site, monitored twenty-four-seven. We would ramp up what we're doing right now with Black Knight, make sure there was a few more stops.
And what are they doing?
Currently, they're coming twice a day.
And they're?
They're patrolling the area. I think that there's people just hanging out. If there's unhoused people hanging out, they're moving them, telling them to go to another location. If there's people doing things on the street that they're not supposed to be doing.
They're calling it in, patrolling?
Yeah.
They're kind of being visible in that area, they're, okay.
Exactly, just letting people know that there's a presence.
Is that something that you intend to make throughout the duration of this as a condition of approval? Is that what's your intent with that?
We can make it, yeah, I mean, we can make it a condition of approval, but it's something that which we would do in this, you know, for this project.
Okay, and then regarding the the Caltrans area?
Yes.
Have you ever heard of the Adopt a Highway program?
I have.
Is that something that you think, that again, my goal here, if we go this direction of even considering it and not denying it tonight, would be that there is an immediate benefit to this neighborhood.
Right.
An immediate, and there has to be a nexus, in my opinion. So i- if you were to adopt that highway, would you be able to go through that process of getting those permits with with Caltrans and and maintaining this area?
You know, I, it's something that I'm definitely open to.
Okay.
I don't really know anything about it, but I.
Something you can look into and come back if 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 we were to make that.
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. With regards to your public art, I saw one of your concepts. Do you have a preference between an option where it looks like Wood Springs or more commercial, or is that more up to the council?
So both of the, both of the renderings that you guys saw tonight were purely really conceptual renderings that we did several months ago. If we were given approval to proceed forward, we would go take another bite at the apple there and invest some more money and and get some more renderings. If the the city or council had input on how you would like the building to look, that we would kind of follow your lead. I personally like the the more commercial-looking build, but I I wouldn't I wouldn't go with the one that we showed tonight.
Okay, so that would still be up to a discussion?
Yeah, but if this, if the council and the city wanted a building that looked like a hotel, then we would build the building that looked like a hotel.
Okay. Do you, back to, just real quick on securities and patrols, do you plan on having security on-site during hours or after-hours, or? Is it roaming only?
We we have, we'll have some security on-site during hours. I think it really depended on, once we open and see what's needed. But we would have the Black Knight Security there twenty-four-seven doing stops, then we'd have our own team, and then we'd, we'd also have it remotely monitored.
All right, very good. I'll, I'll, I'll leave some questions for down the road. I don't want to take up the whole time, so.
Okay.
I'll turn it over back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I would like to hear from the resident. You said there was a resident, Frankie Miranda?
Yes.
Or could we wait a minute?
Yeah, yeah, we can do hear that. Would you like to hear the resident first?
Or just ask the question?
Yeah. Okay, wait, okay, go right ahead.
I want to thank you publicly for bringing in Wood Springs Suites. Because they're our first hotel in the city of Bellflower. So thank you for doing that. Can you talk to me, talk to us about your, this structure of the self-storage? Are you going to, are you part-owner of this self-storage, or are you selling the property to a self-storage company?
So, so I'm not affiliated with the Wood Springs, just to clear that up.
No, no, you brought in Wood Springs Suites to Bellflower, that's what I'm saying. When you sold the property to them, they built the hotel.
No, 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 I'm, so I'm not the.
Oh, you're not?
That was, that was Gold Coast, who is the.
Oh, so you are, so you are the self-storage?
Exactly.
Okay, so self-storage company. Tell me about, tell me about the structure.
Yeah, I'm the developer of the storage, so my company is, we own the land. We are paying for the build with our equity and and bank financing. And then we are also the owner of the asset once it opens. We would then bring on a third-party management company who would have zero ownership in the building, but they would put their branding on and manage the property.
Okay.
And we are, you know, our group is, is, we don't syndicate out deals, so we're we finance everything ourselves internally, and it's a small group.
I see, okay, okay, so we don't have the owner of the property here? Tonight?
So the, the owner of the property was Gold Coast.
Yes.
Gold Coast was the hotel developer, so we are in contract and have the exclusive rights for the property from Gold Coast.
Okay.
And and we have the right.
So you have the ENA with Gold Coast?
The PSA, yeah.
PSA, okay, so how long have you had it?
I had, we've had it on and off. We've been in contract for about a year and a half.
Okay, I see.
Yeah.
All right, got it, thank you.
Mr. Coops, you got anything right now? Do you dare to tell us how much longer you have on the current contract?
I do, so we've released a significant amount of money while in contract this time. So Gold Coast, since they have been unable to sell it and nor have they really gotten any interest on, from a hotel developer in the the five years or six years that they've had it marketed, they're pretty much willing to give us as much time as we need.
Oh, I see, you're not, any duress to get it?
Well, we just need to continue to release money. So we had it under contract without it releasing any funds, and then we dropped out, and then we tied it back up at the beginning of the year, and we've recently started releasing money. So they'll give us as much time as we need, because we won't close until we're entitled. But we also, we need to pay to, we need to pay to.
When you say releasing money, you're paying Gold Coast or develop?
We're paying Gold Coast. Yeah, against the purchase price.
Okay, so they're getting an income while you're in play?
Well, yeah, they're, we're just paying, we're essentially, we have a fairly large deposit, and we're releasing funds against the deposit and the purchase price.
So do you lose all that money if you don't go forward?
We do.
That's fine, isn't it? All right, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. I'm hitting the road here, aren't I?
Remind us, someone's got the juggler grip right there. Mr. President, did you have something?
Just a follow-up question on the, what's the typical lifespan of a storage facility?
I'd say like most real estate, you're looking at, you know, it depends, like it, it could be thirty years, but if it's if it's a successful facility, then, you know, who knows? As long as the building doesn't fall apart, you don't shut it down.
So that leads me to my next question. What's your typical upkeep schedule like, look like?
Well, I mean, we, we spend money on repairs and maintenance, we keep the building up, I mean, people don't come and rent units if if the building's falling apart, especially in, you know, an environment now where it's very competitive.
I've been doing research on them, right, and so I I see some that are, they look a little bit like, you know, I want to make sure that that never happens, if this were to ever happen here, is that they don't never become a blight, right, so.
Right.
But, okay. Sounds good, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question of staff. Elizabeth, do you know how many storage units currently we have in the city of Bellflower? I know we have quite a few, because they're, I can picture in my mind's eye how many there are.
Councilmember Coops, off the top of my head, I think there's at least three self-storage facilities in town. One, I believe off of Foster along the riverbed.
Right.
One that's near Plunkett and Artesia Place.
Right.
They recently had a fire, and then I think another is on Lakewood Boulevard, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know how many units, but those are the three big sites that come to mind.
Those are the three I'm thinking as well. I can't believe any more than that. Although this project is certainly not like that. These are all one level.
Right.
Can I ask the storage guy to, to? You know what, what they were describing there, yours, this is a, we don't have any of this multi-story.
No.
This is state-of-the-art. Why don't you explain the difference between your project and what was just described here?
Yeah, I mean, most of the facilities that you guys have in the city right now are what they call first-generation, you know, storage facilities. So they're drive-up, you pull your car up, you know, roll up the garage door. Most of them, and I think, I I don't know for sure about the ones at Bellflower, are not climate-controlled. You know, they're semi-secured, but, you know, it's really just a lock on a door that's outside. Our facility is fully enclosed. A lot of times you do have fully enclosed facilities that have drive-up units around, you know, the side of the building, but our, our bill does not show that, nor are we looking to do that. You know, it's enclosed, there's an office, it's fully secured, it's gated. There's a keypad entry into the building. There is, there'll be two, I'm not sure yet, but probably two or four elevators within the building. And it's just kind of completely different than what what you see in those other facilities.
Yeah, this is like the, what you see now.
What does it cost for a month? Depends on the size of the unit, I'm sure you got different sizes.
Right now, the the average is for a ten-by-ten unit, which is kind of like the the standard, is about two hundred dollars.
Okay.
That's the market price.
Okay.
But, you know, storage pricing is dynamic, so if you go look after the meeting and it's, it could be one fifty or it could be two twenty-five. You know, but that's about the yearly average.
And what we find is the, the storage fees exceeds the value of the contents, right? I have nothing else.
Did you have something? Okay, so I've been always amazed at the storage building that got built in Cerritos off the six oh five freeway.
Yes.
That's been, and I, and it just sold too, a year ago or so. So your project is similar to this, but a much smaller?
It's not much smaller.
So what's a, what's a square footage difference between the Cerritos one and yours?
I think the Cerritos one, I think it was two hundred and seventy thousand, it's a, it was one of the largest ones in the country, and I believe.
Yeah, the one that I heard is this side of the Mississippi, but.
Yeah, I think the sale was the largest sale in, you know, in.
Yeah, what did it, what did it just sell for?
It was ninety-one million dollars.
That one of those Cerritos off six oh five, ninety-one million dollars, they just sold it eight months ago or so?
Yeah. I think it was, you know, say, between two fifty and three hundred thousand square feet, but then there was also an entitlement to build an additional sixty thousand square feet on the property.
That hadn't been built yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a ninety-one million, and so your proposed, now I can visualize something. So your proposed site, your proposed storage building is two-thirds the size of the one on, you would get, I mean, just.
Yeah, a little, a little less if.
A little less, a little more than half, then?
Well, if you include the expansion, it's, it's probably about half.
Okay. It's a big sucker, because that's the biggest one I've ever seen on six oh five.
I've been in that building.
And, and it was interesting, when it opened up, it, these, you know how like the, the mobile phones all have their own color? Well, that's the same with storage, I've noticed. So when it opened up, it was a different brand. I don't know what brand it is now, but it didn't last about two, three months, and then all of a sudden they painted everything. It went from what a color it was, now it's green, I think.
Yeah. And. I think it was a public storage, it was orange, and now it's.
So they fired the operator there, I guess, and.
Yeah, that's the management company.
And they had to come and put the corporate colors on. That was all, I was just amazed at that. But that happens time to time, but that's.
It does.
It's, is it a corporate brand? So when you you build it, own it, and then you find an operator, that operator has a corporate brand that they bring and put it on the building?
Oddly enough, it, it, it functions similar to the hotel business. So you, you know, a hotel developer would develop a hotel to the standards of a Wood Springs Suite, and then they would bring on the Wood Springs Suites, brand it Wood Springs, and Wood Springs would manage it and and manage the booking, but, you know, the original developer would still own the asset.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
So the workings.
I, I'm not sure why that changed. I do believe that it changed because of the, I think the company that was acquiring the asset owns other assets and that are all probably with the new management company, so they probably want it under the same umbrella.
Got it. You guys good?
Yep.
Okay, here's some chat. We would like to hear from whoever's out in the audience that lives in that neighborhood. You said there's somebody possibly here? And, okay, okay.
Oh.
And you can stand up here with them or sit down behind them or something. Yeah, please sign in, and then when you're ready to go, just state your name so it gets on the recording.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
My name is Frankie Miranda. I'm a resident at Advanced Mobile Home.
Okay.
I've been living there for about nineteen years. It's been a very bad area with transits, homeless, prostitution, drug use. People, you know, having sex in their cars there, I find condoms, things like that. This project with the storage, I think it's going to be a very good benefit for the community. He was talking about the security, the cameras, all that is something that we do need in that area. It is an area that has been neglected for so much. We recently had that whole area by Caltrans cleaned up, and let me tell you, it one is, it's the best thing that we have ever seen as residents, because they removed the homeless, and we have had one of those issues where cars are being broken. We're finding a lot of people dumping stuff there, mattress, furniture, appliances, including leaving the vehicles there abandoned. Putting a hotel there would not make that area any better. The crime will increase. You guys did talk about the parking over at the hotel. I am a witness that where I live, there are people that are parking there, and they are walking over to the hotel. So that makes me feel that the parking is also an issue for that hotel. And as a resident in that area that has seen so much, that has lived there, like I said, for nineteen years, putting a storage in that vacant lot will minimize traffic, will minimize the crime, and it would be benefit for the entire residents. And me as a resident there, I am very happy, and I thank you guys for the projects that you guys have been doing in that area. And me as a resident there, I am very happy, and I thank you guys for the projects that you guys have been doing in that area. And we do hope to see more improvement in that area for all of us. That's it.
Hey Frank?
Yes, sir.
Do, so you're in the Vans,
Mobile Home.
Mobile Home Park. Do you have much of the problem with the transient population coming, walking through the Mobile Home Park, or messing with cars, or break-ins?
Yes, sir, so for the Vans Mobile Home, there's no gate, so it's a very easy access. On top of that, by where the Motel 6 is at, there's an entrance there, and off of Lakewood by where the exit for the 91 East, there's an entry there too, so we get a lot of transients and homeless just passing by there every day, especially between 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM, we see them, we hear them talking, you know, they come and open the water holes to grab water off of our mobile homes, and even on the fire, for the firefighters.
Firefighters.
Yes. So it's an issue there.
When the hotel went up, did you notice any difference in the neighborhood with the hotel there, did it get better?
No. It's, the only thing that has been better was just basically the little projects that you guys did in our community, but regarding traffic, it has escalated a little bit more. Like I said, you know, people are parking on the area where the mobile homes is at, which is on Palm and Passage, because even where STG Auto Group is at, there's people parking there too, they walk to the hotel. So parking is an issue, even on street sweeping, there is no parking.
Why, why do you think they park over Passage and Palm area, and then they walk all the way to the hotel?
It could be from parking from the hotel, and I'm not sure what other activities that there is doing. Like I said, as a witness, I have seen prostitution, drug trafficking, and, you know, abandonments of vehicles and furniture. So that is one of my conclusions, I said I don't go to that hotel, but I do walk my dog, and I do see the activity that goes down there.
So you see them walking all the way from STG all the way, that's a long block, that's a long block. And they're not dipping into the Habitat for Humanity, they're going into the parking lot where the hotel is?
Yes, and that is because there, there was no fence, and the fence that was initially there, it was cut down. So it was just an easier access for them to just walk to there, I know, because when I walk my dog, I go all around, and I go through there just, you know, so she can smell, and, you know, it's easier access.
Okay. I just, that was just odd, it's-
Yes, it is, of course it is.
It's kind of mystery, isn't it?
It is.
Okay, any questions, Frank?
Mr. Mayor, when the, you know, we had that empty car lot there, STG occupies it now. And so you were a witness to, for many years, when there was no activity there.
Oh, actually, there was no activity, but it was completely dark.
Well, there you go.
Because of the lights.
So, did STG improve that situation, them just being there?
Oh, yes, because of the lighting, yeah. It improved, but of course, it's not to where we feel safe enough to walk our pets at, you know, 12:00 PM, you know, in case the dog has to use the restroom, or even if you want to go, you know, to McDonald's or to buy something, you know, it's still not the safest area. But it has minorly improved.
Isn't there a hundred spaces in your park?
Around, yeah.
So has that ever been suggested that you would put some gates up across the back there?
The owner of the land doesn't want to invest at that moment, that's why every year on February, they do increase the rent to $34, to get to the 1,205 rent, which is right now, we're paying about $987.
And it goes up every year, $34?
Every year, yeah.
Now, didn't they do some massive improvements in the right-of-ways there, I saw electrical and plumbing?
Yeah, so the only, the biggest improvement was putting the new lights. It was very dark there too, so that was one of the biggest improvements, which also helped the community, and on top of that, the STG Auto Group, the lighting, made it even better.
Did you know the people that own it now built that park in 55?
No, I didn't.
Yeah.
They did?
Yeah. That's all I have.
Okay, he's a historian up here.
My father put the plumbing in there, in 1955.
We never had plumbing issues, so that's good.
All they had was a laundry room, and a clothesline.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Frank, have you talked to management, to the owner, about improving the safety situation in the park?
We have, I have usually, I'm the one that takes a lot of initiative into that community, so I do bring it up to her. A lot of times she does tell me that I do have to come to you guys, and that she'll bring it up to someone higher than her. Again, I haven't followed up with her regarding that issue, so it's just a little slow process.
So do you have any, some kind of association there of homeowners?
No.
Well, they can still be owners.
Oh, well, my parents do own the mobile home, but, you know. But no, no, we pay for the land, the space.
All right, thank you.
I just, I thank you for coming forward, I mostly just wanted to hear your opinion on, you live next door to it, not us.
Yeah, of course, yeah, so it's, like I said, it's a little process of improvement, you know, the habitat, you know, the STG, and, you know, like I said, you know, adding a hotel is not going to make it any better for the community. Right now, that cleanup that you guys did, we are very happy because it removed all the homeless. Since, since that day that everything was cleaned, we have not seen a homeless, we'll see transits, you know, just to make it an easier, you know, walk, you know, for them, but the trash has minimized too, which is a very big improvement for us, and like I said, out of so many years living there, we have never seen anything like that. When Caltrans comes, they only chop up the bushes to like, half, and like, a month or two, they're like already high, so it's like a whole year you have to wait for Caltrans to come back and chop it off again, but right now, it's, it looks really amazing.
Okay. And you have no concerns if a storage area goes in there that there's not going to be?
No, no, actually, after what everything he explained with the, the safety, the patrolling, the cameras, that's going to make our community better. And again, it's going to be benefit because we don't have a gate. So having that patrol, the security patrolling the area, is going to be benefit for all of us, yeah. So I think that's a really good idea, I don't think a hotel's going to make it any better. On top of that, you have the Motel 6, you have all the other motels on Artesia, and then that hotel, oh, I don't think another one would make any better, like I said, prostitution is there, drug trafficking is there, and again, I'm a witness, I picked up, you know, drugs and things like that, that are on the floor, including needles, so.
Yes.
It's not going to make it any better.
Thank you.
Thank you. Frank, I think sometimes, I think you're being a little modest, can you, when we had our park master plan, you represent quite a good amount of people that live in Mobile Homes Park, how many people did you bring to the, to the-
I was able to bring about, between nineteen and twenty-one.
Yeah. And that was all you? So, so I'm sharing that because I think you're a little modest in the sense of, you know, you do have a community there that you're representing, and that you're here to represent tonight. Quickly, you talked about the, the, the traffic in the area. Do you think, and the lighting, you talked about the lighting that STG brings, do you think lighting like that over here on this right side of you, of the Mobile Homes Park, where the storage would potentially be, would that be beneficial in that area, you know, having that type of lighting as well?
Oh yeah, of course, yeah, of course, there's no lighting there, so it does get dark.
Okay, and then street sweeping, you talked about street sweeping?
Yeah, so during the street sweeping, we have nowhere to park our cars, off of Artesia Coke, there's a street sweeping there, so we do have to park our cars on top of the sidewalk, just for that there, because there is no parking, so if there was to put a hotel, it's not going to make any better for that area. And again, families are living there, about three, four, five of them in a home, there's three cars, there's only two inside of the mobile home where you can park, and then a car outside, so it doesn't make it any, any better.
Very good. Thank you, sir, appreciate your time.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Okay. All right. Did we flesh out any more questions? Nope.
Okay.
All right.
All right, well, thank you.
Have a seat, and we'll figure out what the pleasure of this council is. Any questions of staff, guys, gals?
See if there's anybody else from the public beyond-
Oh, is there anybody else in, out in the audience that want to come and voice an opinion on this project? Come on up. Thank you, Dan.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and members of the council, my name is Sophia Partita. My question is to the staff, I know the recommendation for the city council was to deny the project application because the environmental checks weren't made, but I know that that's part of the process of approving, is making those environmental checks, so I guess I'm just confused and curious about that. What environmental checks haven't been made that, you know, where, that lead the staff to recommend denying the project? And what environmental regulations need to be checked for it to be approved, like what's the difference in those two regulations?
Oh, I'll take this one.
Yeah.
This, this is an abnormal process, if you will, but this is sort of an abnormal question for this area. Specific to your question, what are the environmental reviews? The environmental reviews that are necessary for any project like this are a sequel analysis at a bare minimum. The entitlements associated with this project would be a general plan amendment, a development agreement, a zone text amendment, Beth, you can jump in if I'm saying that incorrectly, all of those things would, in and of themselves, would require an environmental analysis. Ultimately, the council can't approve this project until those things are done. So if the council receives and files this item, and staff is able to negotiate the, ultimately, a development agreement and go through that analysis with, with proper review, this item would come back before the council for a formal consideration.
Okay, so it's being recommended that it's denied so that the environmental regulations can be completed?
It's being recommended for denial because those things can't, those things haven't happened, and the council can't formally take that action without those things happening.
Okay, and so what's the difference between denying it and putting it, you know, doing that alternative discussion, option one and option three?
I mean, the council has the authority to take any action the council pleases, so we leave that option open to them, but the, I would say the most realistic options for the council are either deny the project or receive and file the item. Staff can process an application.
But what does the third option do?
It's just discussion of us, of this body up here.
Oh, got it, got it, okay.
That's all.
Just in case.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just in case, more discussion.
All right, thank you.
We're all, we all were confused too, you're not alone. Very unique.
I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
So just to add to the discussion, based on the square footage that's in the staff report, that's about 142,000 square foot. The development impact fee that the city would collect based on the current fees is about $811,000.
And that would be for a hotel or what's being presented, either way?
No, that would be based on industrial rates, which is what's applicable for the self-storage units.
Right, but if it were a hotel, what would it be?
For a hotel, that would be commercial rate, and assuming the same square footage, that would be about $1.37 million. Yeah.
So do we know what WoodSprings was, what were the fees on WoodSprings, that's what my question was?
I do not have the square footage information. Actually, we backed into it. If we do the calculation backwards, based on the public facilities fees that they paid, based on that, the square footage for WoodSprings is about 48,000, and the fee that we would collect is about $468,000.
We should be clear, the development impact fees associated with the WoodSprings project, when it was constructed, would be different than what they are today. Remember, you guys have adjusted your development impact fees in the interim period, so. So take that with a grain of salt, if they were developed, but that same project today, you'd probably be what Anna is saying.
So we can't compare apples to oranges.
Right, exactly.
I was just wondering, WoodSprings there, I'm not doing the square footage of the, of the storage building, it was a square footage of WoodSpring, because it was a hundred rooms.
Right.
What's a hundred rooms?
But again, keep in mind, you're doing, ostensibly, if this project were to go forward, you'd be considering a development agreement, and as part of that, all of these things are-
It's all, yeah, that's why I wanted to know what WoodSprings was, it may have been negotiated back then.
Right, and Mayor, if I may add, for the WoodSpring suites, they were, because we did not have the public safety or transportation impact fee at that time, they were only required to pay the public facility fee.
Okay.
And just to clarify, the $468,000 figure that I gave is based on current fees, I just used the square footage.
Oh, square footage, okay. What was the square footage, the square footage of the storage building?
The, so, 811,000, based on the square footage of the self-storage building, which is 142,000 square feet. WoodSpring Suites is about 48,000 square feet only. So if I multiply that square footage based on current rates, it would yield to about $468,000 in development impact fees today.
So much less, that was with today's prices?
Yes.
So a hotel the size of WoodSprings would be half the fees of the storage facility?
A little more.
What was the 1.2 million that you had, what was that?
Base, if I use the self-storage square footage, given that it's a commercial development.
Okay.
Because right now, the industrial rates apply to them.
You know, industrial repla, industrial rates apply to storage. Okay, commercial rates apply to hotels. Okay.
But the bottom line is, it's $500,000 more for a hotel.
For a hotel, given that the square footage is the same.
Right.
Than the one that's being proposed in it.
That's what I-
Gotcha, okay, that's what, that's what I was, yeah, that's where I was going.
And keep in mind, under the specific plan, there's a litany of uses that could ostensibly be placed on this site, inclusive of a hotel, and ultimately through a development agreement with this project.
Thank you.
Any final questions to staff? Uh-oh, we're losing the crowd. Oh, you're coming to the podium, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I don't live in the area, but I've been listening to what's been said, and in my opinion, if I lived near that area, I'd much prefer to have a storage facility than a, another hotel slash motel. Hotels, motels can attract a wide variety of customers and people hanging out around there where storage, you don't have all that traffic, all of that temptation and stuff, and while motel may create a little more, you know, more income and fees, in the long run, it may cost more to have that type of facility in the city. Also, it seems if we haven't had any takers in the last, I think, five or six years, how long do we want to let a parcel just sit there and attract transients and have to be cleaned up and everything, waiting and hoping somebody that wants to build a motel there? It's just my opinion as a resident and a potential, you know, having to see what happens in my city, so, thank you.
Thank you for coming up. Okay, well, I'm going to do something here. I'll make a motion to receive and file the report without taking any further action.
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor, can we have some kind of discussion first?
Sure.
Okay, go for it.
Okay, well, let me just go back to, way back in 2007, when the planning commission approved this West Artesia specific plan, I was very proud of the end product of that, of that meeting. As a planning commissioner back then, I was, I was, I think, very proud that it was our longest meeting ever as a planning commissioner, I think. We finished the meeting, I think, between 10:30 and 11:00 back then, so it was a long meeting. And the crowd, the hall was full of people, especially from the Mobile Home Park. I think it was a good vision back then, it was a good vision to create a, a freeway-oriented development, because if you look at the different cities around, around Bellflower, how many cities have freeway access, similar to Bellflower, I mean Lakewood and Artesia? And then we modified the plan to allow for hotel. And let me just kind of clarify that the zoning- And let me just kind of clarify that the zoning for these two parcels is not for a motel. It is exclusively for hotel. We went to that in the long, long agenda, a long meeting, because there was a misconception that we are allowing a hotel, a motel in that, in the particular parcels. We do not. Those two parcels are exclusively for hotel development. And I clarified back then in a public hearing that there's a difference between a motel, one of the ladies who testified, hotel or motel. No, it's only for hotel. There's a very distinct difference between a hotel and motel. Motel is you have direct access from your car to your room. A hotel, you go to a lobby to get into your room. So that's the main distinction. And I was very proud to have Wood Springs Suites come in to decide because, as I mentioned earlier, that is our first hotel in the city of Bellflower. We have a lot of motels, but not a motel. And I don't believe that hotels bring the same problems as motel does in terms of prostitution, all those, all those things that, all the negative things that you can think of. I've been in contact with, I see the manager of Wood Springs Suites at different events in the city. And they're very pleased with the, with the occupancy of Wood Springs Suites. I asked the applicant later earlier, I thought he was the developer and owner of the property, but he's not. I wish the owner of the property is here tonight. I think that the main reason why this property is not being sold to hotels because of the price. As long as there is an E&amp;A for a public storage, I think public storage offers a higher, a higher price than a hotel. And I know, and again, I wish the owner is here, that there was an offer made by a motel owner in City of Bellflower to buy that property. And I can just assume that the price is low, lower than the price for a self-storage. I think this property will not be developed as a hotel as long as there is a window to develop it as a self-storage. And at the last strategic planning we had, I kind of envisioned that the development in Bellflower has been more focused on Bellflower Boulevard. And rightfully so. We need to invest a small portion of the city and expand in different directions. And I suggested at the planning meeting that we had, it's time for us to expand that kind of vision. It's time for us to expand the development, the coverage of development, to include Artesia, Lakewood, Rosecrans and Woodruff, not just Bellflower. And for this to be developed as a self-storage, to me, is gonna be an injustice. And the people will disagree. But once we have a self-storage, that's gonna be it forever and ever. I don't believe that self-storage is the right development for that site at this time. Again, because of the freeway access, how many more, how many more properties will be available to us to have this freeway access? And I disagree about problems with traffic. I like more traffic on Artesia and Lakewood because that will bring a lot more business to the city. It is one of our major torofell in the city of Bellflower. To reduce the traffic in that area, I think will be a disservice to the entire city. I mean, Lakewood Boulevard is a highway. It is a highway that crosses a freeway. So I agree with the staff recommendation. I just, I'm just one vote to deny the application.
Do you want to make a substitute?
Well, I want, I want to hear if someone else would like a comment.
Anybody else want to comment?
I do have a comment.
I, again, I'm new, so I wasn't here for any of the previous discussions and hotels and all that. But I have driven to this property. I've went through the hotel. I went, this is a very awkward spot behind, like, Wood Springs sits here and it's almost non-existent if you're on Artesia Boulevard, in my sense of looking. Coming off the freeway, of course, you would see whatever was there, yes. And so for me, I'm like, I could, I can understand where there, in my mind, why there hasn't been people chomping at the bit to get there, just in that spot specifically. Maybe over here, Edison, there wasn't that power lines, whatever. And I don't know, even coming onto a Lakewood Boulevard where JJ's trucking and all that is, I don't know what can be developed all there in my mind. But that, for me, I just, once I see that, I'm like, the thought that somebody does want to put something nice there makes, and looking at the renderings and stuff, it would be a nice building, a nice area, something there. I like the idea of security, that type of lighting and stuff like that. And, and the thought that they actually have invested their own money into parking, I mean, Black Knight Patrol, that they didn't have to do that, just trying to keep up with the neighborhood or whatever and keep it nice. I thought that's, that was all good. So I, I just, again, where the, the spot is just a weirdly weird spot. That's where, that's why I was, I understand them putting something like that there.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I think there are sentiments with what Councilmember Sunny, or Mayor Protem, Sunny Santinez has mentioned. Would it be ideal, would it be great to have seen it or to see it develop as a hotel? Absolutely. I think that, I too agree that the foot traffic would be ideal. I would disagree with that sentiment that it wouldn't necessarily improve that area. I think it would. And I think that's why if we go this route and, or even, obviously, right now, we're not even approving it. The applicant has to come back with a lot of community benefits to, to enhance that area. To a degree, I also have to hear the residents that live in the neighborhood that directly, in this case, do elect me as the district representative for that area. They want to see some development there. They're tired of the blight. They're thankfully satisfied with, or happy with the work we've been doing there lately. So I want to thank this body for that. So I think that's where I'm at odds with this. It's, do we continue to, to hold out in hopes? And then if we were to hold out, what would we do differently? And I think those are the biggest questions that I have, is what is it, are we, what are we talking about doing differently? Marketing it differently, removing all the development impact fees to see it developed as a hotel? I don't think that we would go that far, so I, I've talked to multiple hotel developers myself in this process. Since we've had conversations, you know, about this, I've tried to entice them to come and apply or even try to get into escrow with this property. And it hasn't gone anywhere. I am, I'm obviously invested in this area. I would say that, you know, I'd like to see it, I'd like to give direction more to anything to staff tonight to see if this comes back, if we were to vote to file and, and file this report, more, give them more direction. So do we want it to, if we do this, does, what does it look like? Does it look more like a hotel? Does it look more like a business building? What is that? Those are the kind of criterias that I'd like to talk about tonight, too. Because I think this is our, this is our opportunity to give direction to staff. Personally, I'm leaning towards the, the, the commercial building because I think that if it is built to look like a hotel, people might get confused when they actually go to Wood Springs, you know. So I, I'm leaning towards the commercial look. But I'm also, like I said, I just want to reiterate, I'd like to see some more substance behind the community impact in that area and how they're gonna participate in improving that area to offset waiting out the potential of a hotel one day. I, I just, that's my stance for now.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I would encourage you not to give direction to staff at this moment. This is, this is an unusual circumstance. You haven't seen this before. And there's a reason for that because ordinarily, we bring you a fully developed project to consider. This is not a fully developed project on several different levels. All we have is the proposal for the property or the proposer. We have not negotiated that. There are multiple legal and environmental and other considerations that we need to vet out before bringing this back to the city council for consideration. And don't forget also, and this is not just for the city council, but for those listening, that this is a purely legislative decision. If and when this comes back to the city council for consideration, there's absolutely no time limit. There are no, no restrictions on the city's ability to make a decision with regard to amending the general plan, amending the zoning and approving a development agreement, assuming for the sake of discussion that this is a receive and file item for tonight. So there will be a time period within which we need to develop things, if you will, to bring a completely baked proposal to the city council as opposed to a conceptual proposal to the city council.
Mayor, a question to staff. Did you notice the neighboring property owners around the area?
Mayor Protem, no, we did not. It's not a public hearing, so there was no requirement for a public.
Okay, so we haven't heard from the rest of the neighborhood?
Correct. Now, when you, well, if we, if we come back to the council with a completed application, it will be a public hearing and it will be noticed appropriately.
Okay.
Yeah, the way I see it is applicant and us, this body gets another bite at the apple both ways, pretty much. That's the way I, is that right?
And in addition, if you, if I may interject also, is the planning commission. This will take a stop at the planning commission, when the planning commission will provide advice to the city council and with regard to the project at that point.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Coops.
I'm the last one to speak, I think.
Until the next last person.
Less than us, we're in the victory.
There's no guarantee.
You know, we can, a project like this will always be there. We don't have to, what's the word I'm looking, settle for this land to be developed this way. Luckily, we don't own it. Somebody else does, so it's not costing us money to own it. And we all know the work that Lynn did with his crew to really improve the backyard there. And eventually, I think, we're hoping to put a fence up. Isn't that the deal? But I don't want to, I do know this, that when Wood Springs bought that property, and I'm going back to the numbers here. And they bought it for about $2.3 million. And then they developed, in fact, that wasn't Wood Springs, the guy before Wood Springs. Then, of course, they got out of the business and now they're selling this property for about what they sold or bought the entire property for. And that's back to what Sunny said, it's not priced right. But why would they want to price it right for another hotel? Now they got a competitor. I want to price it right or not for someone that doesn't compete with me. Just saying. When we brought the Wood Springs in here, we asked, what are you gonna generate for TOD? He said about $150,000. To our surprise, he's clocking double that. $300,000. We're just getting as much off Wood Springs as we had hoped to get off of two hotels. That's magnificent. You understood, and I wanted you to see the economics of how that $170,000 poops out. It, it sounds good today, but 10 years from now, it's probably $100,000 based on inflation. And we can't really re, I had tabling for the idea that that 2.2 million does not generate enough money unless it's four, they give us 4.4 million, then we're down to our 4% return where we can get the 17, $170,000 a year. Otherwise, it's diminishing returns. So don't look for that to, whereas a hotel, well, always go up, the room values are gonna go up as will, we, we could even change the rate on the rooms, but that's a public vote. That's hard to do. But nevertheless, we know rooms aren't gonna go down in value because the values, the property's gonna go up. But my belief is not to approve this because I think that time is still on our side. We're under no duress to do anything but to wait it out. Now, it's true, it's been on the market here four, five, six years. We lost two or three years to the pandemic because nobody financed hotels. So now it's back on the market again. And there still might be, and we talked about parking, how the magic number is 100 units, generates about 93 parking spaces. We still have the potential that we could do a deal with Edison Company. We may be able to do a deal with a neighboring properties. You know, it's not a done deal on the parking, is what I'm trying to say. But I think in the long run, a hotel there would serve us better and it would eliminate some of the blight that Victor's familiar with along Artesia Boulevard, where you have the worn-out hotels that are not being, conducting business that we're lucky to get any money at all from them on their TOD because it's all cash. This is a real hotel. But that's how I look at it. I'm looking at the long term here. And historically, whenever we waited to do something, we didn't rush into it. When it was all said and done, we were better off. And so just keep that mantra in mind, that time has always been on Bellflower's side. Very rarely have we come back and said, oh, we missed the boat on that. Except on redevelopment, of course. But we got that back when we did cannabis. Right, for our time. But that's all I have to say about that.
Yeah. I think we're battling this thing because we flubbed it up. We should have tied that hotel to, you're building two hotels or none at all. It's our fault. And guess what? Now we got what we got.
Right.
Okay, and just like you say, we've done a really good job, Underground Power. Habitat for, I'm not very impressed with Habitat for Humanity. I mean, geez.
See, and way back, if you want to really do the.
We flubbed it all up.
The history, we were gonna put car dealers along there. You know, Ford West was the first one.
Oh, yeah.
And then.
And we kicked them out.
Right.
Now we got another car dealer.
Right, so, but there was meant to be car dealers all along Artesia Boulevard up to Downey. Knowing full well that Vance Trailer Mobile Home Park would always be there because there's no way to change that.
Yeah. Okay, clerk, we have a motion on the floor by myself and a second on the.
I'll make a, I'll make a substitute motion.
Okay.
For the city council to deny the project application.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a substitute motion on the floor by Sunny Santinez and a second by Coops. Call roll.
Count.
We're voting on the substitute, always goes first. So they're voting on, this is for denial of the project.
Of the application.
I mean, for the application, yes.
Councilmember Sanchez?
No.
Mayor Protem Santinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
No.
Mayor Dutton?
No.
Okay, there's still a motion on the floor by myself and a second on the floor by Ms. Morris.
Mr. Mayor, before you call a roll, I just want to make comments. This does not make this final at any way, shape or form. There's a lot to figure out.
A lot.
We're just exploring it, that's all. And then with that, I'm ready.
Call roll, yeah.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santinez?
No.
Councilmember Coops?
No.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Yes. Caught up here.
Okay, Mr. Smoot, item 13C.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim's joining us, then he's gonna run this show for us.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask to be excused because I have a conflict on this project. I own property immediately next to it.
Well, that's pretty close.
We share offense.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Coops has recused himself of 13C.
Thank you, Mr. Smoot. Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. Item 13C is consideration and possible action to adopt Resolution 25-11, approving the committee. approving the commitment of home partnership, community housing development organization funds, what we call CHODO funds, and home partnership, American Rescue Plan funds, what we call home ARP funds, to a potential permanent supportive housing project located at 15804 Lakewood Boulevard, certifying Wakeland Opportunities for Affordable Housing as a Bellflower CHODO and authorizing the city manager to execute future funding agreements and other documents related to these funds and this potential project. Here's a quick refresher on the types of funds we're discussing tonight. First, the CHODO funds. 15% of the city's annual home fund allocation must be set aside for a CHODO project. These are considered the development of affordable housing. As of the fiscal year 24, 2024-25 Annual Action Plan, the city has accumulated $2,056,204 in CHODO funds for an affordable housing project. Second, in 2022, the city received $1.3 million in home ARP funds. In March 2023, the city council approved the city's home ARP plan designating just over $1.1 million for the development of an affordable rental housing project and $195,262,262 for the administration and planning of the development of that affordable housing project. Shortly thereafter, the plan was submitted to HUD and approved by HUD in May 2023. Home ARP funds have a spending deadline of September 2030. For reference, the last CHODO project in which the city participated was the Habitat for Humanity project on Ramona Street, which had funding commitments approved in 2015 and completion in late 2017, early 2018. So now for some information about Wakeland Housing and Development Corporation. Wakeland is a nonprofit affordable housing developer that was founded in 1998. They have a working relationship with Mercy House since 2012. Extensive permanent supportive housing development experience as well as CHODO experience in other jurisdictions. As of today, Wakeland has a portfolio of 67 completed projects. Here are, uh, examples of four of their 67 completed projects. A couple of them are in Riverside, one's in Vista, and one is in Los Angeles. Staff in Wakeland have been working on this effort for a while. As it turns out, it's, it is two years to the day from when we had our first meeting with Wakeland and Mercy House to discuss, uh, addressing the needs of the community by using these funds for a permanent supportive housing project to help get people from the city's temporary shelter into permanent housing. The team was originally working on a site on Artesia Boulevard, but shifted gears to identify other potential sites due to entitlement time, timing issues. Wakeland has since identified a 28,565 square foot lot or square foot site at 15804 Lakewood Boulevard, which is the southeast corner of Lakewood Boulevard and Rendalia Street, and has just signed a purchase and sale agreement with the seller. Based on their experience on previous projects, Wakeland envisions an affordable, permanent supportive housing project of, uh, around 51 bedroom units with onsite staff providing wraparound services for the residents. The project cost is estimated to be around $30 million with annual operating costs of $600,000. The city's potential proposed funding is only about 10% of the total project cost. The attached resolution for city council consideration contain, uh, contains three main actions. Approval of a funding commitment, certification of Wakeland Opportunities for Affordable Housing as a Bellflower CHODO and city manager authorization to execute future funding agreements and to provide Wakeland with a zoning verification letter. If adopted, the resolution would approve a 36-month funding commitment of city home CHODO funds and home ARP funds in the amount of $3,162,689. This timing would allow Wakeland the time needed to apply to various funding sources for the balance of the cost of the project. The commitment is being proposed as a 55-year residual receipts loan at a 3% simple interest rate. The city is one of three or four funding sources proposed and would be the first commitment of funds. The other funding sources are the County of Los Angeles, the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee, and potentially other state housing funding. Second, the resolution certifies Wakeland's CHODO entity, Wakeland Opportunities for Affordable Housing as a Bellflower CHODO. This certification is required by HUD for the developer to receive home CHODO funds. The city's housing consultant, Avantgard, reviewed Wakeland's CHODO application and backup documentation. Wakeland submitted all the required documentation and satisfies all HUD criteria as indicated in the staff report and attached CHODO checklist. As such, they're being recommended to be certified as a Bellflower CHODO. Last, the, the resolution would one authorize the city manager to provide Wakeland with a zoning verification letter for their LA County funding application to verify the general plan designation and zoning of the proposed site, commercial and general commercial respectively. Any future use would have to be processed in accordance with applicable state and local law. And two, authorize the city manager to enter into funding agreements for the city's home CHODO funds and home ARP funds when appropriate, which is typically when the other funding sources have been secured. With that, staff is recommending the city council consider adopting resolution number 25-11, approving the commitment of $2,056,204 of home CHODO funds and $1,106,487 of home ARP funds to a potential future permanent supportive housing project at 15804 Lakewood Boulevard. Certify Wakeland Opportunities for Affordable Housing as a Bellflower CHODO as it relates to the potential permanent supportive housing project. Authorize the city manager to provide Wakeland a zoning verification letter in a form approved by the city attorney and execute future home CHODO and home ARP funding agreements once conditions are met to implement the potential permanent supportive housing project or alternatively discuss and take another action related to this item. This concludes my report and staff as well as representatives from Wakeland and Mercy House are available to answer questions.
Well, that was a lot.
And my mouth's a little dry.
It was about just as complicated hearing you say it as reading it. I want you to know that. Can you put the picture up of the, the site? Trying to visualize that. I can't. What's there now?
Used cars.
Use, the used. Detailing?
Yeah, auto accessory uses and a used car dealership. It's just north of Alondra.
Yeah. Okay, I know where it is now. Okay, I was going, I was, I was going up by, I was further, okay. Is that property just under contract right now or they own it?
Uh, it's under contract. They just signed a purchase and sale agreement very recently.
Okay.
Well, it's estimated to be that. It's what they envisioned. They're not sure exactly what that will be. We're just considering the funding at this point, not the actual project, yes.
I was surprised we had that much money left. Funny money.
We've been.
Referring to COVID money, guys. That's what I call funny money.
Well, the home ARP money is a result of COVID. That's from the American Rescue Plan that was given to us on top of the American Rescue Plan funds specific to housing and homelessness issues. And then the CHODO money, we've been putting aside every year since we did the previous project to, to build up a, a pot so that we could make a contribution to a project like this.
Gotcha. Okay, any questions? Okay, I'll just chime in this.
Yeah, I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for the city attorney first. Uh, Mr. Berger, quick question, sir, for you. Um, I think I know the answer to this, but I think I'm just going to ask you anyways to be careful. I'm assuming that they, the applicant will eventually end up applying to La Casa, the Los Angeles County Affordable Housing Solutions Agency. Do, as a member of that board, do I need to recuse myself here or there if it ever comes to Casa?
Interesting.
I know, I know. That's what I'm saying. Uh, maybe they might not apply, so I don't know. Maybe it's hypothetical.
It's not an incompatible office issue. Uh, I believe it's a nonprofit. You don't hold in a, remind me of your position with the organization. You're just a board member, not.
La Casa, no, it's a governing agency. Or it's a, it's a, it's an agency. It's a, it's its own entity. It's its own county, countywide entity with public dollars. But you know what? It might be a mute point. Maybe we can ask the applicant if they're even going to apply.
And, well, to your point, at the moment, for purposes of tonight, there's no conflict because what you're anticipating is speculative, although it's reasonable foreseeable, but it's speculative because there is no application pending, so far as I know, and I'm assuming that you know before that particular board. So for purposes of this discussion, I think you're fine.
Okay.
In the future, we can reexamine.
We can reconsider that. Perfect, thank you. Just point of clarification. Um, okay, and then, um.
Okay, now you can talk.
Now I can talk. I'll start off with, uh, the sad part. I'm, uh, I'm sad to see that it got relocated and it didn't have an Artesia, but I, but I can see that this is a good location to, to, to be, uh, developing. And, uh, quick question, what, what was the total count of the units again?
Again, we can't, they're, they're estimating around 50 units.
50, okay. And when we say supportive housing, um, what is, what is, what is the, what do you mean by supportive housing? Are they wraparound services that are going to be available or is it low income? What, what?
That's exactly what it means. Wraparound services for the, for the residents. They are going to be, uh, low income units, uh, probably a level below that, so very low income units, if I'm not mistaken. The, uh, services would include property management, uh, job training, stuff like that, that would help, uh, keep those, those folks going.
So we've always talked about the bottleneck, right, that we get from our shelter. Our shelter beds are occupied, fully occupied, but there's nowhere else for them to go. Would we, would the residents of Bellflower have a priority here? Hard as that? Is that too much? Am I going too far?
Yeah, I apologize. I apologize. Uh, much like the last item, the issue here is this is purely a funding question. It's not a project question. Similar to the last discussion item, there's been no environmental review. There's actually no application pending with regard to a proposal. So this is entirely, as, as the mayor observed, the question of how to allocate money that is not coming out of the general fund toward a particular future project.
So how do we make a decision about potentially allocating something if we don't have the details of?
I, I'm happy to give you the number for the Sacramento Legislature and you can explain that to them. There is, obviously you can't do this in a complete vacuum, which is why Mr. Delalanga has provided you with very 30,000-foot overview of what it might be used for.
All right.
Uh, but in terms of specifics, that is a bit difficult to, A, explain because we don't have a pending application and B, I, I would discourage you from asking for such detailed information for the very reason that we don't have an application that haven't reviewed.
Since you're joyfully enjoying this moment where you've corrected me twice in one evening, um, can I speak to at least the fact that at a certain point this would come back to us then?
Absolutely.
Very good. Thank you.
Mayor.
But then you might be recused.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I might add to that, um, it's worth looking at the history of this. Number one, you all have specifically over time put aside CHODO funds to develop a permanent supportive housing project. It's somewhere in the city with the goal, like Councilmember Sanchez noted, of somewhat releasing the bottleneck related to our shelter operations. Mercy House is our current shelter operation, operator, and I think they could readily, I'm, I'm sure, confident, because they have expressed it to me, that they could, um, express those challenges to you all with that bottleneck. The way this partnership, uh, potential partnership has come about is, um, Mercy House has a history and a working relationship with Wakeland. Um, so we know that there's a partnership between our shelter operator and the permanent supportive housing project that potentially could be a benefit of, a beneficial connection for the city.
And see, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Sanchez, the city manager gets to look like the hero and I get to look like the.
Yeah, I can see that, you know. I appreciate that. That basically answered my questions. Thank you.
And if I can clarify, we actually do have a pending application. It's currently under review.
Oh, look at that. So maybe, uh, you stand corrected, sir.
I do stand corrected. It's wonderful knowing that ahead of time.
All right, I'm, I'm okay. Thank you.
Communication skills are great up here.
Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, I have a question. Uh, so, um, do you have any permanent supportive housing in Bellflower? I can ask that question, right? Okay.
Not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. All right. The way I read the staff report is, um, it's kind of a chicken and the egg. We need to approve this funding so that they can apply for additional funding that can complete the potential funding for the project. Is that, is that the case?
It's kind of like a snowball effect or domino. One domino has to fall and then they can build upon that and.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So, because our, just like what you mentioned, our contribution to the whole project costs only about 10%. So it's not a lot. Uh, can you show the, the sources of other, other sources of funding, Mr. Delalanga? Towards the bottom. There you go. So, um, maybe you can or maybe the applicant can answer the question. Uh, if, if one of these three or four funding sources do not materialize, um, do they have enough bandwidth, so to speak, to kind of offset that?
That would probably be a really good question for the applicant specifically.
Because the reason is I want to make sure that, um, if we approve this funding, uh, I want to be confident that they can secure the rest of the funding. Otherwise, it could be a lost cause for us.
Understood. Uh, they are getting right, one of the reasons why we've brought this kind of so quickly and unexpectedly is because there is a NOFA from the LA County that is open right now that is due on March 3rd. And so they kind of needed this commitment from us to go forward with, with that NOFA for, for that. So it's kind of like that.
Okay.
Snowball effect.
I'll wait for the applicant then to ask the question. Okay, thank you.
Is this, uh, project, uh, the project itself, not to, I mean, I'm probably, nah, I'm not going to ask. I'm going to get shut down. Go ahead.
Mr. Berger, may I ask if there will be a covenant or is that too much detail?
There will be a covenant.
And what's, is it, what's the duration of that?
Uh, it depends on whether, and I don't know because I didn't know there was a pending application, uh, whether they're for rent or for sale. Uh, the for sale is 45 years per, off the top of my head, and the, and the for rent is 55.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Mayor, one, one more question to staff. Uh, Mr. Delalanga, can you explain that, um, 55-year residual receipts loan with 3% simple interest?
I will try. Uh, so the, the loan payments will be made to the city, so the paid back to the city from what is essentially, I think for lack of a better term, is the profit from the project. So 50% of the pri, of the profit after all their expenses are paid off, 50%.
They're nonprofit?
Correct, well, I, so I meant.
Excess revenue.
Excess revenue. That's why I said lack for a better term. Uh, excess revenue would come back to the city as payment for that loan when they have excess revenue. They may not always have excess revenue, but when they do, 50% of that would come back to the city.
50%.
As a payment to the loan.
Over 55 years?
Correct.
Okay. All right. We can ask the applicant for some, some more.
Or better.
Yeah, okay. All right.
You guys ready to get the applicant?
Yes.
Can the applicant come on up? I'm sure my colleagues have some questions.
Good evening.
Hi.
Mayor and City Council. My name is David Heatherington. I'm the Vice President at Wakeland Housing. Uh, maybe briefly, I'll give you a little introduction about our organization. Um, we've been a nonprofit developer, uh, developing in California, across California, for twenty-five years. Um, we've developed sixty-seven projects. Uh, they're all affordable housing. Um, and we really, uh, focus on partnership with the cities that we work with. Um, we're a long-term owner, so we develop a project, and then we stay as the owner typically for fifty-five years, and often we're committed to, uh, closer to ninety years. So, we, um, we see, it's, we really see the value in, uh, being very good neighbors. Um, and, uh, we, we design beautiful buildings and, uh, have third-party property management that does a really wonderful job keeping the, the projects looking fantastic. And, uh, they really become a, a benefit to the, uh, to the larger community. So, I'm happy to take any questions that, that anyone has.
Yep, you can, yes.
Uh, sir, first of all, um, why Bellflower?
Well, um, we have a long-term relationship with Mercy House. Um, we've been working with Mercy House for about thirteen years. Um, they've been operating the shelter, uh, for many years in Bellflower. Um, so when, uh, the conversation started, um, around creating a next step beyond the shelter, um, and a really a solution to address homelessness, um, they came to us and said, you know, would you be interested in, in working on this project with us? And, uh, we, we tend to be pretty selective in terms of who we partner with. And so, we were very, you know, very interested in partnering with Larry, um, and the rest of his team, uh, to develop a, a property here.
So, what you're telling us is you work only with the best?
Yes.
Is that a good characterization?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Can you show the, the site map again, please? I'm just kind of curious about this small parcel here. What is this parcel? I don't remember. Because this is the, um, Madres, Madres Brunch. Is that correct?
That might be the shadows from, from Google.
Is this a site? Is it still a lot, a lot here, or?
No, that's, that's just the side, the sidewalk.
Oh, just sidewalk, okay.
Landscaping or something.
Oh, just landscaping, okay. Okay, and then the, the taco is, taco, taco stand is taco place here, correct?
Well, Taco, Taco King, the large taco shop is across.
No, no, no. There's a taco, galley.
Yeah.
Yeah. Where's, it's, it's on here. Where's a lot, where's a laundry?
Oh, that's the alignment shop there.
Is it further, is it further down here?
That's V and D alignment there.
Okay, I wanna make sure that the taco, taco, taco place is not affected.
Yeah. That used to be public. Taco.
Yeah, I know. Uh, sir, uh, in terms of the, um, the funding sources, I was asking, Mr. Dela Longa, can you show that, um, slide again? Okay, so, in addition to Bellflower, which is about ten percent of the total funding for the, for the, uh, for the project, uh, you mentioned about three possible sources, County of LA tax credits, uh, State of California. How confident are you that you're gonna get the rest of the funding from these three other sources?
We're, we're confident. Um, we can't, we, we can never be sure because it's a competitive environment. Um, but we have been successful many times, including with the, uh, County of Los Angeles. We've had many projects funded, and it's a competitive, uh, process. They have a very, um, transparent scoring rubric, uh, that tells you exactly how many points you get. Um, and you can see how you're competing against other projects around, uh, the county. So, we feel, we don't, we don't move forward on a project unless we feel good that we can be competitive both at the county level and then at the state, uh, with the low-income housing tax credits.
Have you secured funding from these three other sources?
We have, yes. Not for this project, but for many other projects.
Okay, and what was your, um, batting average, so to speak?
We're a hundred percent.
Really? Okay.
For five projects in Los Angeles.
And you know why I'm asking this question? Because we're gonna tie up our funds with you for thirty-six months, is that correct? And we wanna make sure that, uh, you are the real deal, so to speak.
Yes, we've had, we've had a great track record so far. But again, we do, um, we do our due diligence early to, to assess kind of the, the competitiveness of a particular project before we move it forward. Because all this is, you know, there's a cost to design, there's a cost to go through entitlements, there's a cost for all these things. So, we, we like to be, you know, relatively or, or very sure that we can be competitive in the competitions. It always, it depends, um, in terms of who else applies and how competitive they are. So, that's always a bit of a wild card, but we've, we've done this a few times, and, and it's gone well.
Okay. Can, can you explain more about this residual receipts loan? How it's gonna work?
Sure. So, um, Jim, so Jim did a nice job explaining, um, the loan.
Yeah, but this actually is very technical to me. So, maybe in layman's terms, you can explain to me.
Sure. I, it's often referred to as a soft loan. So, to the extent that there is not money at the end of each year, um, we're not obligated to make a payment on the loan. Um, so, these, these projects are using public dollars, right? The, the tax credits that are mentioned there.
From ARP and then, yeah.
And so, those, those programs are set up, um, so that when they allocate funds to a project, they make sure that the project really is not making a profit. Because they don't want to allocate, um, public dollars to a developer who's then going to make a large profit using that money. So, the, the margins are actually quite thin. Um, the, the soft loan, um, allows, it, it works with the larger tax credit program, which is really the large engine in terms of funding these projects. Um, so that's, that's why it's, that's one of the reasons why it's, it's not mandated for us to, to pay it back. It's not a hard, it's not like a traditional mortgage where you have to pay it back.
So, you're telling us that most likely, we've been missing this money back? Is that what you're?
Uh, there's a, there will be payments. Very likely, there will be paying, payments, yes. There are some, you know, there are some unknowns in terms of our expenses. For example, the cost of insurance is very much going to go up in the next few years, based on, you know, what, what has happened over the last few months. Um, but, uh, typically, we are making payments. They're, they're not, um, they're not big payments, but we typically make payments on, on our projects.
What is your, uh, typical admin cost?
For, uh, for a project?
Running the operation.
For our, our project, or for our single project, or for the whole organization?
When you run the operation, what's your admin percentage in terms of the total revenue?
Well, it's, it's pretty limited. I would say our costs for a project like this are about, hmm, ten, well, probably closer to twelve to fourteen thousand dollars a unit, um, annually. Um, and that's, that's made up by property management, by resident services, keeping the lights on, um, and a host of o- other expenses. But there, at the end of the day, there's not, uh, there's, there's really not much, uh, margin there or profit. Is that, is that answering your question?
Yeah, yeah. So, that's what I'm saying. We do not, we, we shouldn't expect a lot of returns coming out of this.
Correct, correct. And, and what happens with the funds? I mean, we do everything we can, and our, our numbers are very, um, we're very transparent with the numbers. We're audited every year. Um, our audits are publicly available. Um, but when funds.
Are you subject to single audit?
I, I don't know.
I don't know, okay.
I don't know. I mean, all, all of our, all of our properties are audited, and our organization is, is audited. Or we, we produce financial, uh, reports every year.
Okay, all right.
And when funds come back, they typically get recycled back through the same program. So, they, it would be, they would be available for other projects.
What is your overall timeline in terms of getting all the funding?
Ideally, we would, uh, have all of our financing available by the beginning of twenty-twenty-six. Um, that would be.
Beginning of twenty-six, so next year.
That would be very optimistic. Yeah, but if, in, in a perfect world, um, we could be ready at the beginning of twenty-twenty-six. And then the project would be, it would take approximately twenty months to build the project. So, kind of fourth quarter of twenty-twenty-seven, the doors would open.
Okay. So, you're doing almost, almost three years, roughly. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Is Dave, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, Dave, regarding, um, I think, uh, Mayor Protem touched on this. The admin, you guys' overhead, what does that look like? Are you guys, overall, agency-wide?
In terms of our, say, our, our organization, what our operational costs are per year.
Right.
Uh, approximately seven million dollars.
What does that equate to your total budget? Is it fourteen percent, fifteen percent, eighteen percent, twenty percent?
It's, our revenues, as a nonprofit, there's, we're not really, we're not really bringing in on an annual basis much more than that. Um, sometimes we're bringing in a little bit less, sometimes we're bringing in a little bit more.
And that's why I'm asking what the, like, your average admin cost, right? Most nonprofits are kind of, they're compared based as to how much they're putting back into the programs versus how much there is on administrative expenses.
Right. Yeah, our, our administrative expenses are, are pretty high. I mean, we have a pretty large, um, we have a pretty large staff to develop and operate. Asset management is quite large, our accounting. And there's just the, if you look at the amount of dollars that we bring in, um, that's a really a different calculation in terms of, um, you know, we're bringing in, it's probably, you know, it's probably closer to ten percent. I mean, it's absolutely something that, you know, I could get back to you on in terms of the amount of, say, low-income housing tax credits and County of Los Angeles dollars. The amount that are, that we're bringing in for projects would far exceed what our, um.
So, for every dollar, for every dollar you bring in, how much of that goes into the housing production?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, off the top of my head, I'm gonna say it's approximately ten percent, but it's not a number that, um.
You mean ten percent admin, ninety percent goes into the project?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Um, I had another question, but.
Go ahead. No? No, he lost it.
I forgot it. I lost it.
Okay.
You good? Good.
I don't have any questions other than, I was glad to hear you say that you, your organization tries to keep all the properties.
We do.
You don't flip them or sell them or whatever.
Correct. We don't, we don't sell them.
Because we, we've had that before, and it seems it just brings problems on.
But that, I didn't like that. Um.
My question came back.
Came back? Good. Okay. Glad I. I reminded you.
Yeah, dude.
Go for it.
Uh, does a nonprofit have a Guide Star rating, and if so, what is it?
No, we don't, we don't have a Guide, Larry may have a Guide Star rating.
That, that, perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, well, thank you. And, uh, and then, do you have any questions of staff?
Nope. I've asked the questions already.
Okay. Go ahead and sit down and.
Okay.
If I could just have. Do you want any, add anything else?
Yeah, if I could just add one more thing. Um, these, these projects really have windows of opportunities. And right now is absolutely one of those windows of opportunity because the county, um, they have, uh, announced that this is the last round that they will have project-based vouchers. Yes, and this, this is the last time they're gonna have project-based vouchers, rental subsidies. And that is a critical piece of a successful supportive housing development. Um, so, this is, if this window closes, um, this project will, it will, it would be very challenging for this project to move forward.
So, is it an app, an application you gotta give to them with our commitment?
Correct. The, what's in front of you tonight, um, would be very helpful for the project if, if everything was approved. So, we, we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Understandable. Okay. Thank you. What's your pleasure, guys?
Yeah, one more staff, one more question for staff, Mr. Mayor, sorry. Uh, for Mr. Dela Longa, just, uh, point of clarification, you know, my colleague touched on this. You know, I was, I did some research on Wakeland, and they seem to be like the real, real deal. But in the case, uh, in the precaution that something doesn't work out, or doesn't, just pencil out, or something goes wrong, what, what are our exit? Or I guess this might be a question for Carl, but what are our exits, strategies?
Well, this, this is just a commitment of funds. These funds do not leave us until we sign these agreements. And you're authorizing the city manager to do that at the appropriate time. So, if they were not able to get the funding, then we would still have it, and we could then seek out another project.
All right, very good. Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, my understanding also is that there's no more deadline to kind of invest this money?
The HUD suspended the deadline for the CHODO funds. That, that's a, a benefit to us in getting that funds, funding spent. There is that long-term deadline for the home ARP funds of twenty-thirty. So, we had a ten-year deadline once that, when that money came out, and in that deadline. And I think I said September of twenty-thirty.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Good. That's a long one.
To adopt Resolution Number twenty-five dash eleven, a resolution approving a thirty-six-month commitment of Home Partnership Community Housing Development Organization funds and Home Partnership American Rescue Plan funds to a potential permanent supportive housing project located at one-five-eight-zero-four Lakewood Boulevard, certified Wakeland Opportunities for Affordable Housing as a Bellflower CHODO, and then authorizing the city manager to execute future funding agreements and other documents related to these funds and this potential project.
I'll second.
A motion on the floor by Councilmember Sanchez, and a second by Councilmember Morris. Call roll.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Aye.
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Somebody wanna go get Dan?
Keep it going, keep it going.
All right. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Coops is here. Consent calendar. Is there any recusal or conflicts, or anything items wanting to be pulled?
Mr. Mayor, I am out on item G, as I have been in the past. Parking lot modifications.
And let the record reflect that I'm also out on item G, as in the past.
You're in. But you drew the right straw.
But I drew the right straw.
So, you're in.
I'm in. Did I say that?
Anyone else?
Do I need to say that better, Myra? It's okay. All right.
Let the record reflect that Mayor Protem, Sunny Santinas, nor I have a conflict.
Again? Any items, anybody want any items pulled? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion on the floor by Sanchez, and a second by Morris. And, uh, consent calendars are approved, approved, uh, without objection. That'll be the order. There you go. Found my place. All right, council reports. Mr. Sanchez, you have anything?
No comment. Thank you.
What?
Are you ill?
Wow.
Don't make me take it back.
What about, what about Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mayor, thank you so much.
Yeah, you got extra time now.
I'm gonna make up for that. I'm gonna take your, your ten minutes. First of all, I wanna thank the Parks and Rec staff for, um, hosting the senior, um, Valentine Party at Sims Park. It was well-attended. Um, I, I really enjoyed it. It was held, um, on February twelfth. Uh, also, I wanna thank, um, Economic Development Department for hosting the Entrepreneurial Academy. It was, um, well-advertised. I was very impressed. It's a, um, it's a, it's a academy for would-be owners or owners who'd like to improve their business. It's a free seminar, uh, held for eight consecutive weeks. And my understanding is there was eighty applicants. And they can only accommodate between twenty-five and thirty participants. And at the, um, first day of the class, there were twenty-nine participants present. So, I, it was very impressed. That was very impressive. And also last Saturday, um, I wanna thank the, uh, Greater Bellflower Little League for hosting the opening day ceremony. It was well-attended. Um, uh, Councilmember Coops and Councilmember Sanchez were there. And I really appreciate, um, the parents, the coaches, the umpires, the volunteers, everyone involved in this, um, uh, major sports in our city. That, um, it, it brings the community together. Because the way you see it, as long as the kids are busy doing something else, uh, there's less time for them to do something bad. So, that is really good. And as I mentioned, um, at the opening ceremonies, it not only develops their, um, physical skills or agility, but more importantly, uh, it develops their character. So, uh, again, hats off to the Greater Bellflower Little League, uh, for hosting this event and for continuing to, um, to manage this program year after year. That's all. Hi, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I wanted to comment on what Mayor Protem Santez brought forward as our attendance with Victor Sanchez at the Bellflower Little League. And they were celebrating their 65th year of being in business. Now, oddly enough, I was there 65 years ago playing Little League. Made me feel like Methuselah.
You're a charter member.
So, you know, I was nine years old. I'm 74. So do the math. Same coaches were there, of course. No. Same ladies in the snack shack, you know. No, I remember that season well because it was the only team I ever played on. Where all 20 games we lost, we were 0 and 20. It was a big year for us. I'm still reminded of that 65 years later. But it was a good time. It's wonderful to see the parent participation. When I played in Little League, and I'm sure a lot of years have gone by, but there are often two or three parents that chaperone with the coach, making sure that the kids are all involved and do the right thing and look right and have a glove. And it really is a group effort out there and it's very impressive. And also I wanted to mention that we also did the Seroptimist Village, not Seroptimist Club, was an event today where they gave out awards to ladies in the community who graduated from high school, went on to JC, but there was really no financial aid for them at that point. And so the Seroptimist Club of Bellflower, of which Myra and many of her staff are a part of, makes sure that these ladies that apply have a chance to improve their lot in life by receiving some monetary enumeration and some gifts and some gift cards and things just to encourage them to continue in trying to get, go forward with their lives. And it's very, very important for us to, important for the Mayor Protem and the mayor and I were there to encourage this kind of activity from the Seroptimists and to know that there are ladies that are not forgotten after they get to college. And it was just, it's really a cool deal to be a part of that. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. Councilmember Morris?
I have nothing.
All right. And I don't have anything to add other than what was said tonight. With that, I'm going to call to adjourn this meeting to the next regular Bellflower City Council meeting at 5:30 Monday, March 10th, 2025. We are adjourned.